But I can see because we're, we are doing drastic changes for some right now. That, um, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a huge bite. But I'd like that at the end of the five years that we were closer to the pie that we need to have. Not necessarily the first year or the second year, but it seems like, and I know it will get closer. As time goes on, but it feels like it should get closer to what the actual pie, how the pie should be cut. At the end of the five years. Um, just to me, so you know, I'm okay to subsidize a little bit at the beginning, but I just think that that, that line needs to come together closer. The further down the road we get, um, to what the actual numbers are for residents, which would, would be lower. And I don't know if there's a way to cut that pie a little bit different as the years go by. I mean, we've been going through COVID, plus we're raising the, the fees. Um, for some businesses, a huge amount, but as hopefully things get better and time goes by, I would hope that we could kind of. Bring those numbers a little bit truer. So that's, those are my thoughts on it. Um, anyone else? Thoughts on, on our last two meetings? And then we'll, then I think we need to start, um. Talking a little bit about, uh. Our presentation tonight so that we can get to a motion. Hopefully. Uh, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate that, um, that Megan and Mark's and Jessica's thoughts. Uh, I really do, however, appreciate the work that's gone into. Uh, thoughtful work that's actually gone into, you know, coming up with this analysis and. And it seems like it's really thoughtfully done. So my personal feeling is. That there has been a really, um. concerted effort to try to. Uh, bring us in alignment with what would be a more equitable solution. And so I'm, I'm hesitant to, um. Mess with that too much, I guess.
Okay, Gladys?
I stand exactly where Councilor Cunahan is at. There's been a lot of time and effort that's been put into this and. I don't know if. Adding all these changes. I mean, Will, what are you thinking based on the recommendations or the conversations that we're having?
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this was difficult. This is really, really difficult because we, I, uh, you know, we, uh. Kit staff knows the values and, and the goals of the city council as far as affordable housing and. And helping low income folks and things like that. Um, so I had to try to do our best to strike that balance. About how fast we're sort of hitting the accelerator on, on, on. You know, how quickly we come into line between user charges and, and, um, and then, uh, and so that was. Sort of a balance we tried to strike at 2%. I'd say. One piece of that is, uh, the inflation assumption is, is 2%. So in real dollars, um, residential is held flat in this model. And, uh, there's just no way around it. Uh, they're our biggest user class and most of the money comes from them. And so it's kind of like a, uh, a tiny change in residential. It creates, uh, a tsunami for some of the other rate, uh, users and, and that was. Uh, how we tried to strike the balance. Um, but if we, if council wants to strike a different balance, um, that's fine as well. You know, we'll just take some extra time and some extra cost, I think with, uh, FCS to, um, if. Uh, and I'd say if you, if you want to do something different than what was presented, uh, just be really specific. You know, say, um, I want residential to increase only 1% or 0% or something like that, so that we can. Bring you back exactly what that looks like for everyone else.
So I, I just want to say that I'm. You know, I, I'm torn between, you know, I, I understand what Jessica's point was for sure and Megan too. Um, and I'm, you know, I was hoping we could diverge something further out. I don't want to hold up this process. I think the staff in FCS has done a fantastic job. We've never done anything this thorough that I can remember in the past. Um, so it's, it is hard to strike a balance. I just want to state publicly, I'd like to, like it to go closer eventually. And now this is five years, so maybe that's where we start in the sixth year when we do this again. Then we will start, you know, doing something that would, um. Come closer. I don't want to hold this up. For that personally. So. Eric?
Thank you, uh, very briefly, Mayor. I, my sense is similar to that of, uh, Councilor Rivera and Cunahan. I, I guess from a public policy decision making and kind of direction process, I agree entirely with Megan's sentiments and that of Jessica. But in many ways, this whole analysis is just this elaborate math problem that these professionals. Have worked their way through and my concern would be. We're sort of taking, uh. We're trying to put public policy thumbprints on it to make sure it sort of goes our direction when there's this delicate balance that's already been struck. So I'm just concerned. That tinkering with it actually, I, I just don't feel sophisticated enough to tinker with it. I guess I trust the math and this is a. Rare situation where we actually get to rely on math to drive public policy decisions. So. And I just feel like the professionals have done that. So I guess I'm just trying to say I agree. With, uh, with Megan's concerns, I agree with Jessica's concerns. I'm just not convinced that if we tinker with it. Um, we might end up disrupting the balance that has been already struck.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to blow up the model, then therefore my other two points sort of went away. But I, I do want to point out that Will said that for septic, it's, it's, it's easier and it's our call and. And so I, I hope that others would be. Hip to, uh, to, uh, keeping them flat plus inflation instead of cutting their rates.
All right, um, I think we should, we need to get into the discussion for tonight's. Presentation, um, so we have two different amounts that, um, you know, we're doing 60 now. We just continued on with 60. You know, we'd be doing the same thing. But then using the electric rates, reduction in the electric rates to try and, uh, get more people in that group. Are, are people feeling that that's a good thing? And if we're going to get, get the group, are there going to be six years? Are there going to be 80? I guess those, those are the questions, correct, Will?
Correct, yeah, with this, uh, 80, uh, requiring, um, you know, a higher system-wide, uh, rate increase. And you know, where we, where we landed on 60, uh, you know, I've, we've been talking about, you'd be talking about missing middle here in a little bit. Obviously, everyone. Uh, you know, at 120 or less is, is feeling a lot of financial pressure in the city of Hood River, but. Through those objective measures, we are finding that the 60% AMI. Is, is the, is the correct one to get below those sort of standard measures of, of rate, of being rate burdened if we, uh, focus at 60. So that's where we landed on that, but it's certainly in your prerogative if you want to. Uh, use this to help, uh, people that we all know are, are struggling, uh, then you might increase it to 80, but. That will also increase rates, uh, you know, across all user classes.
Okay, um, let, let's just see a show of hands and I'm gonna, um, because people can't see us and people can't see us. Um, I'd like to see a show of hands and then I'm going to state what I see so that everyone can hear what's going on. People that are in favor of at least continuing what we're doing now to help subsidize the 60% and below. At, at least do that. That's, I just want to see a show of hands. Who wants to do that? Okay, and I am that. So all counselors have raised their hands that they want to continue at least doing that much. Let's go to the next question. How many people would like to, um, help users, uh, through a credit on their electric bill, if we can work that out? Be able to subsidize their water and sewer bill through their electric bill? Okay, every, all counselors have raised their hand to, um, do that. We're, we're going to need a motion to this effect, but I kind of want to try and see where everybody is. And if we're kind of all on the same page, then we can go forward with the next question. Thanks, everyone. So we've got 60%, we've got. Subsidized through electric bills, yes?
I believe there's rate credits for storm, uh, mitigation.
Right, okay, so that, this is a different subject, but this is the rate credits for, um. Non-residential for stormwater run, runoff. And should we be figuring out a model? I guess we'd be copying a model that's probably already out there. To do that, to give them credit for, for mitigating their, their stormwater runoff, which a lot of them are already doing. To help with their, uh, rates. Okay, I've got everyone except, okay, I've got Counselor Haney. Uh, Mark was, were you, yes, okay. All counselors now have raised their hand that they agree that we should be doing that. All right. So the only thing we have left. If we're going to go with FCS's recommendations for everything. Is, are we going to go up to 80%? And how is that going to get paid for? Is that correct, Will?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we would recommend using utility funds for that, staff would.
Okay, I thought that was what was in the staff report, but.
Yes, grants are available.
Okay. All right, um, and then if we don't all agree or we aren't, we've got a 50/50, we can have some discussion on it if we want to. So. How many would, um, want to go up to 80% of the area median income? Let's, let's just keep in mind that right now we're at 60. And we have about 12% of the people at the 60% rate that are actually using the program. So these things don't happen quickly, um, and we wish they would. People would take advantage of it sooner, but, um. I personally, I don't know how fast we're going to get to the 80, um. Because we don't even have 50% of the 60% uh, group. So, uh, how many people want to go up to 80%? Okay, I have two people. So we do not have a majority, uh, that wants to change it to the 80 at this point. We're, have a majority that wants to keep it at the 60% at this point. All right, um, and do, does all of, uh, let's see, we, the two people that raised their hands were. On that, I just want, so the public knows what's happening, were Tim and Jessica, okay? And then paying for this with the, uh, just the utility rates, I mean, the utility rates are going to be helping pay for the, the subsidy. Are, which is what we've been doing now. Is. Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
Um, when we're saying utility rates are going to pay, is that with the, we monitor it for the 12 months and then we set the rate based on actual usage? Or are we, are we doing this jump, you know, by 3%? Immediately and then assuming we get to 50% usage?
That's for you, Will.
Yeah, well, we do know that we will have the contract cost with Mid-Columbia Community Action Council. Um, so I do think there is, it does warrant an immediate, uh, increase to cover that cost. Um, but we can, we can take a while, we can take a wait and see, uh, over 12 months after, uh, for participation.
Uh, this may not fit into the, in my head, but I guess in, in that scenario where we do some wait and see, I'm supportive of rate pair.
Uh, Tim, did you have a question or comment?
Uh, just a question for, for Will. Um, so at 80% AMI, what exactly is that, uh, that? Uh, income level?
Todd or Sam, do you have that at your fingertips? See if it's in the, uh. I, I'd be able to.
Just, just give me, give me just a minute here. The income level at 80% was the question is, um, $52,543. Thank you.
Is that for a family of four?
Um. Well, it, it probably would vary by, by, because family size, that's just a. This is based on the. The, the median thresholds in Hood River for all families. So I'm sure there would be a variation by family size.
Okay.
And so is the, uh, as I entered, average, then the average household would be. Like if you, the, if you just look up what median family household is for one number, if you have to take one number like off of the census. Uh, that would be. But there are, there are tiered, um, categories for different household size.
Okay. So Megan had suggested, um, in some form in her conversation, I think. That she would be okay with, uh, rate payer, uh, rate payer coverage as we have now to cover this program that we talked about this evening. Um, but we would wait a year and we kind of have a look, see at what, you know, what kind of use we get. Is that correct, Megan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, um, how many agree with that model? Okay, all counselors have raised their hand. All right, I think we actually, um, are ready for a motion unless we have anything else burning on this. We're about 10 minutes after seven. And I think I've written down everything that we've discussed and, uh, decided as a group here and.
Yeah, I was gonna, as I say, I would support, um, Mark's point on the septic haulers. Of keeping that.
Okay. Could you define, could you define that, Mark? We've got a motion on page four. That goes into five and then we've all these things to add in or subtract. Do you have that in front of you and you could add the septic in, Mark?
So it, it just says in, includes a minor change to staff's plan to, uh. Keep septic at, at the current rate plus inflation.
Okay.
Will, would we need to spell out the stormwater rate pair timeline or is that something you can just do without the motion explicitly saying?
Uh, can you clarify what the question is?
With the, the, having like wait 12 months at the rate payer rate.
Not stormwater, you're talking about, uh, low income.
I just looked at the wrong thing on the page, uh, low income households.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. And, and Mayor, would you, would you like, uh, I can maybe take a stab at what this motion would, would read?
Sure, that would be great if you'd like to, Will, and then we can get somebody to, um. First on that, if you can take a stab at what we've already.
Sure.
Said.
So be moved to direct staff to return an FY 2122 utility rate setting resolution for city council consideration based on FCS group's. Uh, rate presentation that includes rate credits for non-residential stormwater runoff mitigation effort. Efforts offset by a broad-based rate, rate increase across all stormwater rate payers and. Includes low income rate assistance for 60% area median income and less, offset by a broad-based ret, uh, broad-based. And phased in rate increase across all water and sewer rate payers. And includes a program to provide low-income households rate credits applied against electricity bills. Equal to the standard water sewer discount for low-income households where water and sewer charges are included in their rent. And that holds septic haulers, uh, flat and adds inflation adjustments, uh, thereafter.
Okay.
I will, I will first that motion.
I will second it.
All right, uh, Jessica has made a first to the motion that, uh, Will has presented and, um. And clarified for us, thank you very much. And Tim has sec, has seconded that motion. Any additional discussion? All right, roll call vote. Eric?
Aye.
Gladys?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Megan?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, that was a lot of information, um, by FCS for the last few meetings and. The most thorough look at our rates that we have ever done that I've been involved in. And it's going to be, uh, welcome for some people and, um, additional fees for others. But we do feel that this is much more fair to what people are actually doing, um, in the long run and. Thank you, everyone, for participating in that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Let me reorganize here for just 30 seconds. All right, um, our next item is a public hearing. Oh, if I can find my script, hold on. A public hearing, um, for the continuation of middle housing, file number 2020-37. And our, um, planning director will be leading us through this, but I'm going to go ahead since this is a continuation. Of a hearing that we started last week, I'm going to go ahead and read the script, uh, for that. I'd like to reopen the public hearing on the legislative amendments to the Hood River zoning code related to middle housing. File. 2020-37 and ordinance 2061. This is a continuation of the hearing first opened on March 8th, continued to tonight to address a noticing requirement raised at the March 8th meeting. And to take additional public testimony. Let me begin with a brief description of tonight's process and a few disclosures required by state law. First, I will describe the order of events for tonight's hearing. We will first hear from staff and then we will secondly hear testimony from the public. After that, we may discuss the draft, deliberate and may choose to continue the hearing. Prior to rendering a decision. Our decision, however, is not final until it is reduced to writing and officially issued. All of our decisions are final and when the written decision is issued, may be appealed to the Land use Board of Appeals. However, to appeal one of your, our decisions, you must participate either orally or in writing before the close of the record. Here are some of the basic rules for presenting the testimony in tonight's hearing. Please present testimony after being recognized as the speaker. Begin with your name and, and, um, hopefully you've given your, uh, address to Jen prior to signing up this evening. Please limit your testimony to issues that are relevant. To the proposal and the approval criteria. If you believe that other or different criteria apply, please identify those and explain why you think they are. Finally, we may set time limits on the presentation of testimony tonight, although there is no limitation on written argument that may be submitted. That is it in way of procedural introduction for tonight's hearing. If anyone has any questions about the process as we go forward. Feel free to raise your hand and ask them during the public testimony portion of the hearing. We will try and, um, since we're doing this via Zoom, we will try to keep, um, a lookout for hands that are being raised, uh, regarding procedural, um, issues. Or perceived procedural issues. We'll go ahead and now hear from staff. And I believe I have, um. Um, 19 people that have signed up, uh, to speak this evening. And we normally give about three minutes and we will go ahead and do that. So our testimony is probably going to take about an hour. Uh, this evening, but we'll go ahead with staff report and, uh, then we will start public testimony. Go ahead, Dustin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to bring up a, hopefully a presentation for you. Uh, as mentioned, uh, this is the continuation of a public hearing 202037. And the purpose of tonight's meeting is to hear testimony from the public and, uh, council discussion prior to any legislative action. Uh, I wanted to take opportunity to thank everyone also who's been submitting information, uh, taking the time to participate in the public hearing in writing or in comments. We, we appreciate that. For those of you just joining in, uh, the purpose of this legislative amendment, uh. From the 2020 work plan is to establish a clear process and regulatory framework to allow greater diversity of housing. Uh, and housing types. That would be implemented in a standalone code. For uses permitted outright such as duplexes, single-family homes and townhouses. In some form of each of our residential zones. To be reviewed under clear and objective standards through expedited review processes. Tonight will be the 13th public meeting, uh, since council adopted its 2020 work plan, which initiated this project. Uh, in your last meeting, I provided you the staff report in a summary. So tonight I just wanted to, uh, follow up on some issues that were raised or re-raised. Uh, since our last meeting. First, uh, first off, we've taken quite a bit of public feedback. That the code is drafted is going to allow, uh, 12 units per standard lot in our, our two and our three zones, which is, is not really how the code is. Drafted and nor is it accurate. So to clarify this, uh, for everyone's benefit, uh, as written, the code prescribes the amount of area. For dwelling unit, uh, 2,500 square feet in our R1 zone and 1,500 square feet, uh, for our larger end of the spectrum of the middle housing in R2 and R3. And further, the draft caps the total number of dwelling units that could be developed in a single project. Uh, this is a maximum six in R1, which, uh, at that size would require about 15,000 square feet, uh, or more than two standard lots. The draft code max or, uh, puts a maximum number of dwelling units in R2 at eight. So you could not have a project that had more than eight dwelling units. Uh, this would require anywhere between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet of area or two to three standard lots. Uh, and then the code caps the number of dwelling units at 12 in the R3 zone, which were at this. Rate would require between 15,000 and 18,000 square foot of site area, which would be between three and four lots, um, standard lots it would take to, to build that many units. Uh, the graphic that you have on the screen comes from your March 1st meeting. And it represents some anticipated outcomes based on the draft code, uh, that was presented on March 1st at your workshop. Uh, looking at our, our two and R3 5,000 square foot standard lots. Uh, the depictions to the right represent really some of the max densities that would be built out. This shows a three-unit configuration as well as a four-unit, uh, the four-unit being, uh, units less than 800 square feet. So the idea that 12 could fit on here is, is really, this, this isn't really aligned with what the code is drafted to do. And this should represent graphically what the outcome, what we could anticipate as an outcome from our test fits. And this issue really overlaps with some of the other comments we got regarding market and test fits. Uh, before we even got into code writing, we used an outside architecture firm to run test fits in our typical lot sizes. To help inform the code set and to see what would be possible, uh, under some revised regulations. From that look, uh, and early on, we took some council direction, um, that was addressed at narrowing the gap between what was already permitted in our code. And started to break down some of the individual code issues and parameters. We blended some of the existing Hood River code regulations. With some amendments that were, uh, addressed to, uh, really address some of our code issues that we have now. And adapted some industry practices from our neighboring communities that incorporate these regulations today. Uh, which we've discussed at various meetings, um. And at various points over the process. Uh, I also wanted to use this to illustrate some of the, the outcomes. To the far left, uh, is a 14,000 square foot lot, which would be two R1 lots in Hood River. Uh, initially, this, this code started out, uh, looking at seven permitted units as a test fit. As we went through the process. As we introduced regulations and did refinements, this actually came down to about five dwelling units, which would be max, the maximum building area in this. In this code, this, this was a result of including, um, and working in additional setbacks and parking requirements. Uh, the, the middle unit, uh, on your screen is a test fit for a duplex, a detached duplex or two cottages. Um, on an R, a standard R1 lot. These are two 1,100 square foot, um, call it cottages or, or smaller units. And this remains the maximum density, uh, that would be permitted on a 7,000 square foot lot, uh, under the, under the middle housing code is drafted now. And to the right, uh, is a 10,000. And to the right is a ten thousand square foot lot. Or two R one lot, or excuse me, two R two lots. And the maximum density on that under if you had units over eight hundred square feet is six. All these tests were presented before city council as well as planning commission prior to the review of the code. And really helped envision what the outcome would be for for buildings that followed the design standards and some of the regulations. Moving on to height, this code was drafted with a custom height calculation to promote compact dwellings intended to be compatible with traditional neighborhood designs. Again, as deliberated planning commission didn't recommend the height change, but recommended that the height be looked at citywide. As staff who uses this code, we agree that a citywide evaluation would be helpful. But we did not recommend perpetuating some of the current height standards and issues in the current code. And instead looked at a customized approach. That considered some desired design outcomes, looked at some of the infill constraints and eliminated some of the ambiguities. That we have with the current code and some difficulties in administering it. Onto parking. To fit the housing code product line with parking while allowing some flexibility. Not unlike the building height request, there's a specific code recommendation tailored and built into this code for parking rates. This included a parking location look and limiting the number of access points to be more in line with the traditional single family neighborhood. Promoting the availability of on the street parking, having fewer disruptions in sidewalk and tree planting opportunities within the right of way. And this is currently addressed in the code by limiting those curb cuts and preventing parking from below being located between the building and the front units. Other issues that have been of topic of interest since our last meeting landscaping currently you do not have a single family duplex or town home landscape requirement outside just the right of way. This code implements a landscape area, planting plans and tree preservation requirements unlike other parts of your code. Building separation came up quite a bit. This code outlines the building separation that covers not only the minimum building code. But anticipates some owner and occupant obligations for future access and maintenance. The code standard is not unlike other codes in the area using a ten foot separation. Such as the city of Bend uses a ten foot separation. And they just amended their standards once again, keeping that in place. Transportation was addressed. As addressed in the staff report, we typically will look at transportation planning rule, the TPR rules when we do quasi judicial jump zone changes and legislative changes. For the purpose of middle housing, the state and our partner organizations who handle TPR rule administration has exempted the need for TPR findings. Using House Bill two thousand and one as well as the administrative rules in six sixty. And so prior to to working on this code, we we discussed this with the DLCD staff, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Who confirmed the safe harbor provision for TPR findings for municipalities who incorporate middle housing regulations into their code set. So really, this is my roundup of what has occurred in the past week. I'm here for questions again, I wanted to thank everyone for weighing in. I know you have a host of people who want to participate tonight, but I'll be here and any questions you have, I'd love to take them.
Thank you, Dustin. I think that we'll, we'll go, does anyone have any question specifically for Dustin right at this moment? I'd like to get to if people don't, I'd like to get the public testimony right away because people have been waiting. Write down your questions and we'll, I'm sure we can ask more when we get done with the public testimony. Unless you have, have to ask it right now. But if you want to ask it right now, you want to say something, Megan? Okay, all right. Thought I thought you might, but I wasn't sure. Okay, we're going to go ahead. I'm Jonathan, I think you'll be queuing our people up, so I'll give you a couple of names so you can see who to queue up. The first person will be Tina McNerthney and then Lenore Perconti.
Hi, can you see me? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Tina.
Go ahead. Also see me this time? I tried to make sure I honor their request to show my space. So hopefully you can see.
No, we can't see you.
Oh, well, let's see video. Well, I'm sorry that I don't know how to figure, I use Zoom every day, but this one for some reason I am.
If I may interject, um, as city protocol, taking a public comment, we only allow for audio.
Oh, okay. Great.
So there's nothing wrong on your end.
Well, thank you for that. I thought last week someone had mentioned it. I testified last week, but I was in such a hurry, I figured I'd just slow down and give another minute here. One thing I wanted to thank you for addressing again, the affordable housing issue in our city. And given one point I wanted to raise that others have raised in written testimonies. I think that given that we're in the midst of a pandemic. Where in particular, working middle class and lower income households have been disproportionately burdened. I do find it a little concerning that those very households that the middle housing code isn't intended to benefit are not likely is able to be at the table as much as they ought to be. And during that year twenty twenty is when much of this middle housing cold code was under discussion. You know, people dealing with children at home zoom all the time. By the time they get to six o'clock on a Monday night, I think it's a lot to ask them to get on a Zoom meeting. And I guess just that and the, and the general injustices, sometimes a lack of the same kinds of resources as maybe higher income families. I, I have a concern about having gone through this process during the pandemic. When, you know, talking to neighbors, I can't even easily talk to my neighbors. So it's just harder to have conversations in the community about this. It's my input. The other main point I have today is I feel that if the code is going to permit fourplexes, as I understand it in the residential zones are two and higher. But as I, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like fourplexes will not be allowed in the R one zone. I'm not sure if you want to clarify if that's if I'm incorrect or correct about that. Maybe Dustin can.
I think Dustin will just have to clarify that.
Okay.
Later on.
Later, okay. So as I understand it, I'll just go on as I, as I understand it, R one zone does not permit the, the fourplex as proposed. And I, I would say that excluding fourplexes from the R one zone, which actually has the largest lots as, as was nicely demonstrated a few minutes ago. Is kind of an inequitable thing. It's actually inequitable and it will exacerbate socioeconomic divisions. I believe that as you guys have discussed. The way to ensure compatibility with existing homes in R one would be to implement a citywide design standard to avoid things like the ugly boxes that we all don't like that are tall three story boxes or town, certain types of townhomes. I sincerely believe that in the R one zone, we should encourage the, the kinds of density that we're also building into the other zones and that it should go across all of them. I think that will create a more socioeconomically diverse community. And I also just wanted to applaud you for looking at things such as sloped roofs or other ways to ensure compatibility. Because one of the worst things about some of the newer housing is that it's just like boxes taking up as much of the lot as possible. So I'm very pleased that the, the middle housing code has some room for some green space standards and some other considerations like setback and roof styles and, you know, design. So yeah, that's my feedback.
Okay, thank you, Tina. So Lenore is next and then Mike Kits.
Hi, thanks for allowing me to speak. My name is Lenore Perconti, human resources supervisor at Mount Hood Meadows. Personally, I rent an ADU on Blackberry Drive. However, for this comment, I am speaking on behalf of Mount Hood Meadows and Cooper Spur Mountain Resort. Mount Hood Meadows is supportive of the proposed middle housing code. As an employer, the lack of local affordable housing for middle income workers translates to challenges in retention and recruiting. And threatens our ability to innovate and generate business. Meadows employs a core team of around one hundred and fifty around staff seasonal managers. These are skilled administrators, tradespeople, professionals and leaders. Our core team wants to be here in the gorge and they want to contribute to the community. And they want to be able to see life in the gorge as sustainable for them long term. Data gathered by Meadows indicates that most of this core group who are seeking to purchase a home cannot afford to buy in Hood River or the local area. In exit interviews, employers cite the dismal prospect for homo and lack of housing security. Security as one of the main reasons they choose to seek employment and move to a more affordable location outside of the gorge. As an employer and economic driver in the region. Meadows has and will continue to take steps to address housing insecurity for our team. Advocating for the missing middle is one of the many efforts we have made to address this issue. A few other examples include partnering with local landlords via the turns for tennis program. Taking on two master leases with local property management entities to provide affordable housing. Paying a dollar above the required minimum wage and exceeding industry salary benchmarking. One of the arguments we often hear in response to the affordable housing crisis in the community is that businesses simply need to pay their employees more. And that will solve the issue. A document has experienced a significant increase in home prices over the last several years, and that trend continues today. Businesses in the area simply cannot keep pace by raising prices for our services and paying exponentially higher wages year after year. This is not sustainable. The lack of housing inventory in the gorge is the nail in the coffin for employers trying to provide livable wages, retain valuable talent and sustain business growth. Pursuing the middle code will help address the housing inventory and affordability issues. Meadows believes that it will positively contribute to the local economy. Mount Hood Meadows is fully supportive of the missing middle code and looks forward to engaging with the city and community on solutions that will allow for our employees, the business, the economy and the community to thrive. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Lenore. So Mike Kits is up next and then Susan Crowley.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mike.
Official unmute button. Okay, I sent you some long, a long winded email and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'm, there are a few points I want to make on it. About the middle housing. Listening to Dustin's presentation, I think it would, if people are skeptical of the, of some of these. Some of the ideas in the middle housing thing, they should go by twelve twenty nine McKinley Court. That's something Greg Craftson I did about twenty years ago, and it's actually six standalone homes on a fifteen thousand square foot infill lot. And it works really well. I've got fourteen off street parking spaces on it and the homes are about eleven hundred square feet. And it fits the neighborhood. It's, it's a good example of an infill lot, in my opinion, one of the best ones in town, if I do say so myself. And another thing I think people could go look at too is a project where we just turned over to Mike Kettler over at the end of Thirtieth Street. It's called Tanner Ranch. And we went around and around with the city trying to get a PUD designed for that. And it was going to be a bunch of little cottage homes, eleven hundred square foot. We could fit about forty little houses there in a PUD format. But we were, the requirements the city asked for were just made it so we couldn't do it. We had to give up too much land. If this middle housing ordinance had been in effect right now, there would be, you know, there'd be a cute little neighborhood of cottage style starter homes, finished and occupied. Instead of what's going to happen is, you know, thirty gigantic townhomes on that property. So it didn't have to be like that, but it is, and that's we're forced into doing that. So the points I'm making, the PUD process has to become, has become increasingly difficult to access in the last twenty years. To the point where many developers won't even consider it. It forces builders instead to put up the biggest tallest structures to offset land and development costs. I'll support anything that helps create affordable housing in this town, but I really think this ordinance doesn't go nearly far enough. Just way developers into changing their routine. If expedited permit processing and willingness to interpret codes to benefit the builders and other incentives aren't part of the equation, then I'm afraid the middle housing ordinance will be underutilized. Also, it's really disappointing to hear people being so negative about this. I'd like to know why the opponents would deny the opportunity for teachers, nurses, public employees, basically anyone working in this town to have any hope of homeownership. A survey done by the state found that people are equally opposed to density and sprawl. That is the reality of what you're dealing with here. Council should make decisions based on the public good, closing the door on working families not in the public good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Susan Crowley's next and then Justine Van Hoot.
Good evening. I'm Susan Crowley, I live in Hood River. And I wanted to first start by letting you know that I think there are lots of good aspects to this proposal. I actually helped, I actually helped organize the missing middle presentation that happened about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And Heather and I largely put that together. So that kind of got that conversation rolling. I've done tours of Portland missing middle, not developments, but housing situations. And I'm very impressed by things like the smaller footprints, the reduced bulk that's being advocated. The parking in the rear is tremendously important in terms of streetscapes and friendly places to walk for everybody. And the landscaping requirements are great, although it is hard to keep a two inch tree alive. I do have concerns about increased lot coverage and runoff, but I've talked to you about those and I'll, I'll pass on because I wanted to talk constructively if possible about overload concerns for the streets. This town, as we all know, has some very old streets, some very narrow streets. A lot of places, there are no continuous sidewalks. Some streets actually exist on cliff sides virtually. And we don't have any Portland area type public transport system. And due to various constraints, we probably won't for at least a generation or two. We just don't have the ability to support that kind of infrastructure on many levels. But on page two twenty nine of your testimony packet, I've got what I hope is a proposal you might consider. And that is to tie middle housing development to streets that can support them. Host streets that are designed to certain levels that can provide for things we very much need, which are sidewalks for pedestrians. And parking lanes in street for the inevitable overflow that's going to happen. Because you've got a lot more population on just the same space. It's inevitable and if possible bike lanes. And not to mention the increase in traffic that's going to occur. There's an actual drawing that is in your packets you're going to consider next month on your transportation system work. And that's at page two thirty of your testimony packet and do look at it if you can. Because that's the kind of street that will provide the kind of infrastructure for streets that this kind of intensified density need needs. Otherwise, we are going to have just a mess and we won't know about it until after the fact. And I think it's something everybody wants, including the developers in the new development areas. It's going to be less of an issue, but there are streets that simply won't support increased density.
Susan, you need to wrap up, please.
I will, thank you so much. There are some procedural errors that I've mentioned, they exist. There is, at this point, very few people really know what's going on. And I really do think you need to defer decision making on this until more people can give you the kinds of good ideas that you're likely to get tonight. On how to make this actually better package, not stop it, but make it better. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Sarah Bellison is after Justine Van Hoot. Justine, you may have to press star six. I'm not, I'm not sure if you can hear me. I'm not, I'm not sure if you can hear me, Justine. Okay, it looks like your mute's off. Are you there? We cannot hear you. Yeah, you're not coming through at all. Jonathan, let's go to Sarah Bellison and then we will come back to you, Justine, and we'll try you again in a little bit. Because we have so many people we need to get through. And then after Sarah is Matt Rutledge.
Hi there. Can you guys hear me?
Is this Sarah?
Yeah, this is Sarah.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Great. Okay, well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this very complicated issue. I've been a staff volunteer, a staff and volunteer at the Hood River Warming Shelter the last four years. A lifelong environmental activist and lover of both people and nature. And I understand on many levels the complexity of this issue. Working with the homeless, I met a man who had lived for twenty years in his pickup truck at Ruffton Park until he was in his sixties and was finally able to qualify for an apartment in the Indian Creek Village apartment. So I do understand this on a very personal level to some extent. The need for human habitation, the need for manageable town size, the need for recreation, the needs of nature are always going to present conflict as they're often in opposition. What we decide to do as a community, once it's done, will be difficult to reverse. So we must, I feel, take this slowly and carefully, not giving into the pressure to develop and grow quickly. And I recognize that you guys have been working on this for years. I've only lived here for three years, so. The small town flavor of Hood River and beautiful old homes here are what make this place so special. And having space around homes for gardens and open view corridors as well as habitat for local flora and fauna are important parts of life in Hood River. And having permeable land to absorb rainwater runoff is vital for preventing flooding. Increasing density and paving over nature can have negative impact on many levels. Affordable housing is needed here in Hood River. Well-placed decent apartment buildings that are on public transit lines, the cat bus, are a good way to use land, help reduce homelessness and increase diversity in our town. Changing setback rules to make it easier for a homeowner to create more housing on their property with ADUs, but with enough regulation to prevent full land coverage and overuse of a property is another possibility. Perhaps requiring a certain number of years of reduced rent on an ADU in exchange for leniency on setbacks to build could lead to more housing. Giving tax deductions to local homeowners who build rental property for long-term rather than vacation housing is another possibility to increase affordable housing. We're a small town and a wonderful town where many people want to live and the sad reality is that we can't all live here. Putting, I don't know, to me, four to twelve cottages on one small city lot seems excessive and tearing down historic, beautiful housing seems tragic. Maybe some people would like to turn their houses into apartments, these bigger houses, and that would also increase housing. Anyway, it is what will happen if this sort of zoning change goes through. It feels like we could be creative, but this feels extreme to me. Although I, you know, hearing more about it, I have a better idea of what's going on. So thank you for that opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Let's go with Matt Rutledge. And then let's, if Justine is on, we'll try to go back to Justine and see if she can, we can hear her again. So let's go with Matt.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
We can hear you, Matt.
Great. Neighbors and members of the council, my name is Matt Rutledge and I'm an owner at eight thirteen May Street. I've lived in the East May Street neighborhood for the past eighteen years and have lived in Hood River for nearly twenty-one years. And this time I've witnessed Hood River change dramatically. As noted, real estate prices have skyrocketed and the availability of homes for middle-income residents has become nearly zero. I have friends, neighbors and colleagues who are currently searching for affordable housing in Hood River. And I agree, we are in a housing crisis that needs to be addressed. However, I must recommend that the city council not approve the proposed middle housing zoning changes. While these changes may increase the quantity of developable land, it does not ensure that these developments will fit the middle housing needs. There's no assurance that developers will build housing that fits pricing that is accessible by middle-income residents. What it does is provide the opportunity for developers to cash in on more dense zoning and to build dwellings that maximize profits in a demand-driven economy. And the gorge not only has real estate at a premium, but construction labor costs are higher than the Willamette Valley because of extreme demand. Additionally, material costs have skyrocketed with framing lumber prices increasing a hundred and eighty percent between February twenty twenty and twenty-one, as reported by the National Association of Home Builders. These increased costs will be passed down to the consumer. It is impossible with zoning alone to ensure developments meet the middle housing target and stay in this inventory long term. Additionally, the quality of life of existing homeowners will be significantly impacted by these proposed changes. When I purchased the house that we currently live in, I could reasonably expect that my neighbors would continue to be single-family dwellings or at most two-family dwellings. I should not have had to expect a potential of eight additional residences stacked up next to and behind our home. With this in mind, the impact of the zoning change will be most deeply felt by the existing middle-income residents of the city as it is unlikely that a developer will scrape a multimillion-dollar residence on Sherman while a five hundred thousand dollar property that is considered a fixer-up around Prospect, which recently had a list of cash buyers ready to jump in and build. The reality is that the zoning will impact those that already own modest homes that are the backbone of our community and fit the demographic this change attempts to target. Finally, the statement in the planning department findings that reads, "There is no evidence that middle housing or other types of multi-unit development impacts nearby property values in single-family neighborhoods. As development has occurred in the city, property values have continued to grow over time, generally increasing as land has been subdivided and developed into individual housing units. In no way can be determined as related to the long-term value of a home in Hood River and should be examined in the context of non-land constrained developments. Correlation is not causation and the current state of the real estate market in Hood River cannot provide adequate perspective to sufficiently determine whether or not single-family home will be negatively affected by dense multifamily developments adjacent to it. The planning department has not adequately proved that these zoning changes will not negatively affect property values as outlined in criteria seventeen eighty zero twenty C three. Because of this and the other reasons I've outlined, I ask you to reject proposed zoning changes."
Thank you, Matt. Let's see if we can get Justine back.
Am I there? Do you hear me?
We can hear you, Justine. Go ahead.
Yay, sorry about that.
That's okay. We got you now.
Hello, my name is Justine Van Houta. I moved to Hood River in two thousand and three and feel very lucky to have been able to buy a home at that time. It was just above town on June Street in a nice neighborhood with many small, very modest homes. I agree that we need to address the affordable housing issue in Hood River. Since two thousand and three, I have seen town grow immensely. Congestion in the heights has gotten a lot worse and traffic flows are difficult. Over the years, I have watched as many houses and city lots have been built on and smaller and smaller sized parcels have been developed with multiple dwellings. I have friends who cannot buy homes here because of the availability of homes and skyrocketing prices for even the most modest homes or tear downs. This is not a problem unique to us. I came from another resort town, Telluride, Colorado, which has many similar challenges to building and affordable housing. Telluride, like Hood River, has a boundary that they need to build within. Although unlike Hood River, I feel that they have done a very good job of building affordable, lower and middle-income housing for shop workers, skier employees and service people to buy into. They built two or three developments of forever deed-restricted primary residence homes for people who wanted to live there. They could have renters living with them, but they needed to be the primary residents of the homeowner. They were priced modestly but were quality construction and each had small gardens and some private outdoor space. I felt like they were much like the Mike Kits developments that went on on Katie's Lane and off West May Street years ago. The difference is that in Telluride, these housing developments are for people who truly want to live in those residences and are invested in the community. They don't ever go back for sale for market value. This, I feel, is a sustainable approach to affordable housing. I think we have seen that just by adding more houses has not done anything to help people like Eddie Petricelli, who spoke the other night. I live next to two homes that are old and in some disrepair on nice larger lots. Does this new zoning idea make these homes worth upwards of a million dollars because they can now have four to twelve dwellings on them? I see wealthy developers and second homeowners coming in and capitalizing on this. Is it fair for those who bought in an area which had certain zoning to enjoy a bit of space around their homes to now have that changed to a high-density zoning where more and more second homeowners are buying up every property they can? Does this solve our housing problem in the, in the long run? I think we've already seen that just by building more homes regardless of size, et cetera, does not mean that workers who want to live here necessarily can. Let's think of sustainable, long-term solutions for Hood River. Subsidized deed-restricted primary homeowner purposely-built developments, I believe, are the answer. There are some great examples of this in many resort towns. I encourage you, the city council and the planning department, to research some of these solutions and not go forth with the affordability zoning solution. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Justine. So we'll have Brian Tuie and then Kim Lubin.
Am I here?
We've got you, Brian.
Thank you. I really like a lot about this code, but I'm concerned about its effects on roads and parking and safe routes to school in particular. And I hope you find a way to make parking available. Mike Kits' comments earlier kind of made some great points about parking. It sounds like, you know, based on his experience, it's possible to have it. He's done it. I'm familiar with the developments he's talking about. It's important that this code be consistent with the needs and desires and input received from the community. And as proposed, this code change delivers those unintended consequences while falling short of meeting the community expectations. The community has stated pretty clearly that there is a need for affordable and workforce housing and this proposal doesn't deliver that. So in your two thousand and twenty-one community input survey, missing middle, for example, was mentioned twice and affordable thirty-three times. Comments from the sixty-three people that took that same type of survey on the same subject in two thousand and twenty, they, they were overwhelmingly, I think, you know, one mention of missing middle and lots of, of comments about affordable housing. And even the comments last week, and it appears like it's happening again this week, were overwhelmingly clear that these changes should emphasize affordable and workforce housing. So my suggestions to remedy this are that you should require one point five parking spaces for dwelling for market-rate homes. Maybe provide a parking density bonus for homes only in the situation that meet affordability criteria such as being deed-restricted, like Justine just said. I think that's a great idea. And I just, I think it'd be nice if you could make changes to this code that'll align it with the original stated intent from, you know, that's, that's apparent from those surveys and will meet the needs and desires of our community. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Brian. Then we have Kim Lubin and then we'll have Brian Robb.
Thank you. Well, I have to say I am brand new here. I've, I've never been to a city council meeting before. And although affordable housing is important to me, I have not been up on this issue here in Hood River until recently. I'm really moved to speak and I will be very brief. I'm not even sure what I want to say is exactly on point, but I moved to speak really just because of some personal experiences here in Hood River. I think for me, I just, in my work, I'm a professional here in Hood River and I see people who are not housed. And I am not necessarily speaking about the Warming Shelter that is wonderful and where I have volunteered. But I know of a young professional woman who recently became, she has been hired in a medical job and she has been sleeping at friends' houses and briefly in her car because she is absolutely unable to find housing. The reason I said, I'm not even sure what I'm talking about is on point, although she definitely would like to buy a home. Right now she can't even rent and I know that's not the exact focus of what you're talking about here. But in the larger issue, and another single parent with her daughter who works for one of our companies here in Hood River, she is couch surfing with relatives right now because she is unable to buy or rent. And then one last one who is certainly financially stable, a friend, and she, of course, has left town and has gone to outside of Vancouver, which is easier for her. But when I heard about this meeting and, and was thinking about these people, it just occurred to me that there's something off here. There's just something wrong. And I just felt that I wanted to just be public with my voice. I am very warm and housed myself in a lovely home I've had for many years. I'm very grateful. But I do support your work on this issue and I'm very supportive of this particular work that you're doing right now. And thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Kim. So we have Brian Robb and then Linda Maddox.
Hello there, councilors and mayor. I assume you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you for hearing my thoughts on the middle housing ordinance as well as considering my written testimony against proposed ordinance two thousand and sixty-one, which I have provided to you. I have lived in Hood River for almost thirty-four years, coming here from Bend. Bend is a prime example of how a massive increase in population density can have many adverse effects and work to destroy the quality of life in a small town. I'm in contact with many longtime Bend residents and they are almost unanimously appalled by what has happened to their once idyllic community. Where ordinance two thousand and sixty-one to become law, Hood River may very well head down the unfortunate path of Bend. You are considering this ordinance at the height of the COVID crisis via, I lost my space, via the Zoom system. Why this system is necessary to avoid spreading the deadly virus? It utterly fails in providing the in-person public input needed for you to come to a conclusion that the citizens of our town truly want. Developers and other special interests use the Zoom system to their advantage and are comfortable with its operation, whereas the general public often is left out. This ordinance is deeply flawed. It puts forth assumptions on population growth, growth as if they were cast in stone. It throws out a zoning system that has served the city well over decades and installs a completely new system that is untried and fraught with a real, very real prospect of disastrous consequences. Considerations of traffic, schools, parking, medical services, utilities, employment opportunities and so forth are ignored or given cursory attention. The ordinance puts the burden of developing affordable housing solely on the city of Hood River and ignores the interconnectivity of all the communities in the mid-Columbia region. Hood River should not be going on this alone. Also wished to question the assumption that this ordinance will create more affordable housing. I feel that increased density does not, as a caveat, lower housing costs. Bend has an even higher housing cost than Hood River with greater density. Furthermore, this ordinance fails to consider that the city has areas that it can handle increased density and areas that cannot. The ordinance instead puts forth an approach that massive development should occur everywhere. An affecting, effective zoning ordinance should consider that every piece of residential property is not the same and apply appropriate standards, taking into account the consideration, the unique, of the unique characteristics of various, various parts of the community. In closing, I ask that the city, the city to immediately put the brakes on this headlong development approach. Wait for in-person public hearings to occur and allow all segments of our community to be given equitable access to information and the fair opportunity to provide their input. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Linda Maddox and then Laura Dunn.
Can you hear me, Kate?
We can hear you, Linda. Loud and clear.
Okay, let me, am I loud and clear? Okay. Thank you. Linda Maddox, Dana Lane, in Hood River. I'm sorry, I'm going to be negative, negative, and I'm the last person. Please read my written testimony, because what I'm going to say is very general. The sweeping changes to our current zoning code will change the look, the feel, and the livability of our city forever. It is a huge change in public policy regarding what is allowed to be built in all our residential zones, R1 to C1. It is developed, it is developer-driven, and the city will lose control over zoning by giving carte blanche to developers as long as they build densely spaced housing. There is no public review and no right of appeal by anyone. Every residential lot in Hood River from R1 to C1 is at risk for becoming very dense housing. Is that what we want? Planning run amok, ruining our city and the place we call home for growth at all costs? Plain and simple, this new ordinance allows too much development in our small city. If the new code becomes law, there is no assurance for any landowner or homeowner what type or kind of very dense development will be adjacent or across the street from their own property, and there should be no realistic expectation that current zoning will remain. All it takes is a developer offering to build middle housing next door to lower the value of your home, most likely your single-largest investment. It is unnerving. There's no security in home ownership under this scenario. Please reject this ordinance. I think we can do better, and please read my testimony, which is in detail, in a lot more detail regarding the actual standards in the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Linda. Laura Dunn and then Adam Smith.
Hello, this is Laura. I would just like to voice my support generally for changes that will promote the building of more smaller and less expensive housing types to help alleviate the, the affordability crisis. My only concern is that there's, it seems like there's very little that you can do to stop investors from buying up these homes to use as second homes and driving up the, the market forces just would drive up the, the prices until these small homes are also out of range for our local working families. And the thought that I have is that it, it's, I think it's very important for all members of our community to be able to afford comfortable housing, but I don't think that home ownership needs to be upheld as such an important goal. I think renting, rental opportunities are also very important, and I, I would like the city to consider investing in being a, in, in rental, in a rental property targeting middle income, that middle income group. I think that there would be opportunities with a public-private partnership with local employers on such like, such a project for like a middle-income, public, publicly-owned rental housing units. And when the, the big advantage there is that you could set the rules for income, the income levels that you want to target in, in, as residents, you can set residency requirements, and these are things that you can't do when you turn those parcels over to private ownership. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Adam Smith and then John McGrawery.
Hello, everyone. This is Adam Smith, and I live at 1622 Stella Lane, south Belmont. Good evening, mayor, council members, and those tuning in. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I moved to Hood River just over 10 years ago after receiving a job teaching science at Hood River Middle School. As a science teacher, I explore the laws of motion with my students. The first law, the law of inertia, states that an object will not change its motion unless acted on by an outside force. This same law also seems all true for individuals, institutions, and cities, where inertia can imply a tendency to do nothing or remain unchanged. With this in mind, I speak to you tonight to ask the city council to commit to fostering diverse housing options for those working in the community. About two years ago, I was fortunate enough to purchase a home, thanks to what was presented to me as a collaboration between the city and developers, shout out to Mike Kitz, seeking to provide housing for folks working in the community as part of the West Side Development Clan, Plan. Earlier, a friend said to me, it was like, wow, it's kind of like you won the lottery. But let me be clear, I am nearly 40 years old, and despite decades of working hard and saving, I was barely able to afford even this, you know, quote-unquote "affordable" housing, in a very modest two-bedroom home that wouldn't be adequate for growing a family. And if my home were put on the market today, I could not afford it. As you know, there is a certain amount of inertia behind the changes happening in Hood River, and as a city council, you only have so much sway over those changes. I ask you to consider, however, what you can do to foster a community where people can afford to live where they work. Perhaps it's more collaboration with developers and landowners. Perhaps it includes more innovative options, such as supporting co-alien communities, or as Dustin was pointing out earlier, I think it's important to remember that density and livability are not mutually exclusive and perhaps key to providing access to housing where everyone in our community can afford a way in. In closing, as members of city council, you have been elected to represent a broad array of interests in our community, and this is no easy task. That being said, as you continue to approach issues around housing, I ask that you be visionary and do everything you can to support the community which you serve. And as you make these decisions, consider whether you're doing so because it's the least disruptive path or right path that allows as many people as can afford to live here do so that are part of this community. Thanks for being a force that disrupts inertia to be a positive change. Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. John McGrawery and then Ben Mitchell.
Mayor, we had John a moment ago, and it looks like he dropped off, so I will keep an eye out for him.
Okay.
And then put Ben Mitchell up for you.
Ben would be, and then Heather Staten would be after Ben if John doesn't get back on. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, council. This is the third time I've spoken about this, and, you know, it's something that's very important to me. It's a little bit discouraging to hear people who already own homes in this town speaking out against this proposal. I understand that, you know, some people may be acting in good faith and do want to see that, you know, this plan becomes, you know, even better than it is now, and if you were one of those people, then I, then I appreciate that. I don't know that, that everybody is. You know, it's funny to hear these kind of, these complaints crop up over and over again that crop up in other cities regarding affordable housing, where I feel like a lot of times they're just kind of used as excuses to do away with this housing as opposed to things that people actually care about. You know, for example, this, I know people are concerned about cars, and I hope that some of these people, if they were living here at this time, and I know that some of these people who are speaking out against this code didn't speak out, or didn't speak in favor for short-term regulation, short-term rental regulations. And, you know, in terms of cars, I don't have any problem getting around in the winter, and I live on, sorry, I guess I didn't mention this. I live at 1322 Lincoln Street. It's funny, actually, my neighbor's house is actually one of the houses that is on the Eco Northwest, I guess, study there. And, you know, in this, in the winter, there's no problem getting around, but in the summer, where my street is half-vacation rentals that are dark in the winter, there's lots of cars on the street, and that's a time that parking is an issue. And, you know, as for density, I haven't heard a lot of people speak out against these luxury townhomes that have gone up, so, you know, if you're a problem with density, wonder if people have the same problems with those. In regards to people moving here for the beautiful homes in Hood River, I don't think it's the homes that make this town beautiful. I think it's the people that live here, and I want to live with people that live and work in this community and build a life here and want to participate in it. And there's been a lot of talk about character, and to me, that is a far more important character to judge, not about what a house looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And I don't know, has John come back on? Have you seen him?
He has, and I'm going to promote him presently.
Okay.
Hi, this is John McGrawery. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now, John.
Okay, thanks. I apologize. I was having a problem with my internet, and I guess that happens, huh? Let, let me, ma- mayor, thank you, and council, thank you. John McGrawery, 21 East Hazel. I am actually proud to be here today. I'm proud to see so many other people in the community voicing their concerns. This is, as we've, as we've seen in the last year, when our democracy has been threatened, this is democracy in action. We get to hear from the citizens about what they think. Abraham Lincoln said, "Public sentiment is everything. With public sentiment, nothing can fail. Without it, nothing can succeed." And with that quote, mayor and members of the council, I will bring you to the first problem here. That is, you have not provided sufficient notice to this community about what you're acting on right now. As you can see, in the last couple of weeks, more people have found out by word of mouth, and it's spread, and we're having more people speak up against this. But without public sentiment, without giving people the opportunity to know what's going on and listening to them, we don't have democracy, we don't have fairness. That's point number one. And, and from that point, I would ask you this. Don't close public testimony tonight. Give this more time, give it more notice, don't take any action that would nail down the terms of this. Secondly, let me say that I do support this ordinance with respect to some parts of the city, and I don't make any judgments about what parts would be good or what parts would be bad, I, but I do think it needs a targeted approach. It just cannot be something that is imposed citywide. As others have said tonight, we have a zoning, we have a zoning system already in this city. Many people, for example, go, when they moved into R1, they expected the, the benefits or, or, or they might be viewed as detriment, but if they live in R1, they can expect certain things. Here's what I can expect as an R1 homeowner. The code says that I need to have a lot of 7,000 square feet, and then I can only put a single-family residence on it, and that I must have parking, off-street parking for two cars. That's what the code says about R1. That's what people who live in R1 expect. When you enact this ordinance, what you are doing for R1 is you are saying, oh, we don't need 5,000 square feet in R1, we, or 7,000, we can do it with 5,000 square feet in R1, and we can have two units on our, our 1, 5,000-square-foot lot, and we only need one car per unit. That's a problem. That's a problem in, in the people that live here in R1, they don't have the expectation or they don't have the knowledge that a group like you, respected councillors and mayor, can come in and change things, just like that. The, and there are other apartments in other zones, which I won't get to, but the, the other thing I wanted to mention, and I'll try to do it quickly.
Yeah, John, John, wrap up very quickly. Okay.
Yeah, one more point. Thank you, thank you, mayor, but I don't, I don't think this point has been made, so I want to make it. The findings and conclusions of the planning commission were forwarded with this ordinance to the city council for consideration. The planning commission had to consider various criteria in order to pass this along to you, and one of them was that high-quality infill development must be compatible with existing neighborhoods. We know, like I say, this is probably a great program for some neighborhoods, for some it is not, but you guys won't apparently make that decision, but let's talk about that. We know we have a variety of neighborhoods in Hood River.
John, John, you're already at four, you're just gone to four minutes, so I'm going to have to have you stop, and we're going to go to the next person. I, you've spoken once before, and I know that we've, we've gotten your point, so thank you very much.
But mayor, just, may I just say this? The ordinance changes every time we have a meeting, okay? Three minutes by video or by audio is not sufficient.
Well, that, that's what we have, and we also have written testimony that was allowed for weeks and weeks on this. So I'm going to have to say you're done, and we are going to go on to Heather Staten.
Hi, this is Heather Staten. I'm the executive director of Thrive Hood River. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are, Heather.
Lovely, thank you. I want to remind you tonight of how unradical this proposal is by comparing what's allowed under the draft code to what's allowed under your current code. The incentive this code provides developers is that they can build more doors if they built smaller homes. While you've heard testimony that this code allows simply too much development on a lot and that these projects will dwarf their neighbors, the real truth is that this code allows considerably less mass than your current code because there's a very strict limit on square footage. And I'll give you two examples. On a standard R1 lot, this code allows a duplex, that's all. Duplexes aren't currently allowed in R1, but ADUs are. So right now, you can have two homes on a standard R1 lot, and if this code is adopted, you can have two homes on a standard R1 lot. The difference is that the current code doesn't limit the size of the main house, so you can have a 2,700-square-foot, single-family home that also has an 800-square-foot ADU for a total of 3,500 square feet. Under the middle housing code, a unit without a garage can be 1,200 square feet max for a total of 2,400 for the duplexes. That's 45% less building than under the existing code. As you know, standard R2 lots are commonly developed as large, boxy townhomes, say 2,500 square foot each for a total of 5,000 square feet for the building. Under the middle housing code, a fourplex would be allowed, but each unit has to be less than 800 square feet for a total of 3,200 square feet. In other words, townhouses built under the existing code are frequently nearly 60% larger than the largest fourplex that would be allowed under this code. And also, you know, that you have a PUD ordinance that allows much, much smaller lots in all of your zones right now. That's an existing code. Size does matter. I went online to look at homes currently for sale in Hood River. The least expensive ones were both two-bedroom condos of about 950 square feet. While two, while 259,000 is still a lot of money, these smaller units provide attainable homes for working folks, retired people, young families. These small homes are wonderful homes for many people. While this code would allow more dwelling units per lot, I think there's actually more danger that the financial incentives will continue to favor homes for the wealthiest people. Finally, middle housing isn't supposed to be a silver bullet that solves all of Hood River's housing problems. As the expert from Echo Northwest told you several weeks ago, you'll need silver buckshot, a whole suite of incentives and strategies to successfully address Hood River's housing issues. So approve this code and move on to the other suites, suite of strategies. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, Heather. Polly Wood is next, and then Erin Baumacker, Baum, Baumke.
Okay, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Polly. Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, super, excellent. Well, Mayor McBride and members of city council, thank you for your very important work on this middle housing development ordinance, and And I do generally strongly support the middle housing as I think incorporating a variety of different types of housing will go a long way to address the cities of Hood River's lack of available housing. But again, we know it's not a silver bullet. The missing middle or smaller housing options is an old housing concept that has stood the test of time and can revitalize and create great mixed neighborhoods. I see remnants of a form of it in our older neighborhoods and it's part of what has made them work. And so adding to community authenticity, it's high time that we bring back a compatible form, and I know that this is still a work in progress, with our existing neighborhoods. And I have one item to bring up that I don't think has been addressed tonight. And it's about the importance of preserving our older trees as we step into creating middle, middle housing and our town's urban canopy and how important that is. And as I looked at the height restrictions, I, I'm pretty comfortable as I drive around town seeing, you know, these heights limits at 28 to 21 feet because it does seem like that will leave enough room for those established trees. But I just want to express that it's important to preserve them and strive to incorporate them as much as possible with maybe a little up pruning if, if at all it has to happen, but make these, keeping these sizes lower and smaller and square footage, it, it can make it easier for the developers to save very big, important trees. And I just see in the ordinance, as it's written out, the only bit about tree preservation is really, you know, the, the inch-by-inch credit if there's, if they're preserving an old tree toward, I think, you know, putting in a two-inch tree. So I just, I just kind of want to address the importance of, of preserving those trees as we create mixed housing. And I, and I look at the townhouses. Oh, there's some townhouses down on Seventh and Cascade and if northwest corner, you'll see like a locust tree has been preserved and it sort of creeps over the edge of one of these more boxy type of townhouses. Thank God it's there because it just, I'm just really happy when I see big trees preserved because it makes all the difference in the aesthetics and just the livability of having more dense housing. So that's kind of what I have to say. And then also, my second point, I know that people are concerned that perhaps this housing is going in and they haven't seen park space and open space provisions. And they're worried about the increase of housing with, with no park space in sight, but I have to say this, that even if it's not written in stone or, or soil, we have started somewhere. And that is that last September, the Hood River Parks and Rec District took a big step and by entering into a two-year opinion, option agreement to buy the Blackman Skiff properties near West Side Elementary School. And they are currently working on permitting processes.
Polly, I need you to wrap up, okay?
That's fine. Anyway, for those people who are here, you know, it's, I know this is about the middle housing, but don't forget that we have, we can't make every decision in a vacuum and that we also have prospects for parks online. It's just in a different segment of our community efforts. So I just want to promote that as well for people to keep their eyes on. Okay.
Thank you, Erin. So Erin is next and then Doug Archbold.
Mayor, I do not see either of those names currently in our attendees list.
It might be under, it might be under Ally Louise Archbold, under AL. That might be him.
Okay. I'm getting a pop-up saying that I need to promote this individual to a panelist because of their compatibilities in software. Are you all right with that, Mayor?
I'm not even sure what you're talking about, so.
Yeah, that's okay, Jonathan. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Hi, Doug Archbold is here. I thought I was behind Erin, but it seems I'm here now.
Yeah. You were, but go ahead. We, I don't know if we, do we even have Erin?
No, Mayor, I do not see Erin.
Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Thank you, Kate. Counsel, my name is Doug Archbold. I've been a Hood River resident and a Realtor since 2004. In the past five years, housing affordability has become an increasingly acute concern for myself, my clients, local residents and City Council. We're right to be concerned. The ability of local people to live in the town in which they work is crucial to all of our quality of life. Unfortunately, Hood River has been trending steadily away from that reality for decades. While today's home values seem astronomical, there are only one data point on the upward growth curve of prices in our town. The desirability of this area combined with geographic and regulatory constraints to growth suggests that our real estate prices are heading the way of some of the most notoriously expensive zip codes in the country. We've always had a steady influx of high-earning migrants from more expensive markets, but with remote work becoming the new normal, demand has surged throughout the gorge, a trend that I believe will drive values aggressively in the coming years. Now is the time to take dramatic action to create affordable housing options for the future. The middle housing ordinance has the potential to achieve its goals of increasing the variety of housing types, providing for smaller homes and increasing opportunities for infill projects. What the ordinance does not do is provide any mechanism by which these new projects will create affordable homes. Increasing supply alone has not and will not drive prices down. Since 2006, for example, when the city banned short-term rental operations by out-of-town owners, partially in an effort to increase supply for owner occupants, the average Hood River sale price has increased by over 40%. That's over 40% since 2016. No density increase or creative development in Hood River will achieve affordability as long as homes are built at market cost and sold at market value. What the middle housing ordinance will achieve is a density level capable of dramatically altering the nature of Hood River's established neighborhoods. The negative impact of those changes might well be an acceptable trade-off for affordable homes, but density alone will not achieve that. The only thing that will achieve affordability is for homes to be sold below market value and to be deed restricted to remain below market value in perpetuity. This is a strategy that other resort towns in the Mountain West have employed successfully, allowing their local residents the chance to live and own in the communities where they work. This type of program is a massive undertaking. The zoning component is much easier to achieve, but allowing the middle housing ordinance to take effect in the absence of an actual affordable housing program allows all of the downsides of the ordinance without the benefit of creating affordable housing. I asked the City Council to pause the passage of this ordinance and instead undertake the hard work necessary to create an affordable housing ownership program. Once such a program is established, the middle housing ordinance would be immensely valuable. Enacting the middle housing ordinance in the absence of an affordable housing program will only serve to detract from the land ultimately available to support affordable housing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. So I think the only person on my list that we don't have was Erin. And there was one person that's on this, just a phone number. Do we know if that was Erin's phone number or not?
Jen, did you receive a phone number with Erin? I did not.
No, I was thinking he would probably go by email, so I don't think that's him.
Okay, all right. So he's, that is into my list. We did ask people if they had a procedure question to raise their hand. And so I have two people that looks like they have their hands raised and I don't know if it's a procedure question, but that would be the only people that should be having their hands raised on the chat right now. So there's Paula Chak, C-H-A-K, Brian Carlstrom, and now Susan Crowley. And so Dan, our city attorney, I would ask him to answer any procedure questions any of them have because these, these hands that are raised should only be regarding procedure. Looking for Dan. Oh, there you are. Okay. Can you take these if we have these questions, Dan?
Sure, sure, I can handle them.
Okay, Jonathan, do you want to allow Paula Chak to speak?
Hi, this is Paula.
Hi.
Procedure question is that about can we postpone and have further hearings on this?
That's a question for you, Dan.
Sure, it's, this is a legislative matter and so the, the council can take as, as long as it likes to consider this. The procedural objections that have been raised so far that the city has, has complied with procedural requirements and it's also provided additional time, additional opportunities as indicated by the abundant comment in the record, but there's always room for more if that's what the council wants to do.
Okay, thank you.
And then Brian Carlstrom. Brian, you're not unmuted. I think you may have to push star six. Yes, we can hear you now, Brian.
Okay, so that's a good example of how much of a Luddite I am. But you know, using this Zoom, this is the first Zoom call I've actually been involved in. And I'm, you know, I'm pretty savvy with technology, but I really don't think that Zoom is the way to make decisions on something that's important. There's a lot of people that are not able to participate. And in addition to that, a lot of people, well, like myself, for example, when, when I go to a council meeting, I don't necessarily plan to speak, but oftentimes I do. And with this Zoom format, it just doesn't work for me or for a lot of people. And I think that obviously we're doing it because of this COVID thing, but it does make, it does keep a lot of people out of the conversation. That's all I really, I mean, that's the procedural. I got lots to say, but that's the only procedural thing I have to say.
Okay, I'll just address it a little bit. You know, ever since COVID started, we've been doing these Zoom meetings. We don't love them. We have all stated, as soon as we can get back to in-person, we want to get back to in-person. And we had to figure out some kind of a procedure to, to do this, to let people speak at these meetings. And we, ever since we started doing this a year ago, this is how we have been doing public testimony. You know, people sign up, you know, by noon on the day of the meeting and give us their name and their phone number so we can allow them to speak. So you know, it's not an unusual thing. We have been doing it for a year. And I don't know if you want to address it, Dan, but, but that, that's a procedure we've been doing.
I, I attend a lot of different kinds of internet meetings and a lot of different forums. And I think his point is well taken. This is, you know, the worst possible way to do this except for all the other options. And so your options are limited. It'd be great if you could hold, if you wanted to, to hold off until the pandemic is over and the governor lifts the orders that restrict public gatherings. But you know, we don't know when that's going to be. And so this provides public participation. It's not great, but that's why a lot of my meetings, we keep the record open, we continue hearings. Those are the mechanisms that are available as options to you in Zoom land.
Right. I appreciate that. And I understand the whole situation about using Zoom. I, I do have things that I would like to say with regard to this issue. And so I think there's others that would also like to participate that have spoken. And I will know in the future that I need to reserve a spot.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Susan Crowley.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention again that I, by participating today, have not waived the earlier procedural objections I had to lack of public notice. It's not just the 20-day notice rule that was violated because the notice was late. There's also a comp plan provision, your own comprehensive plan on goal two that says by any possible means, you're supposed to try to alert the public to this, a particular hearing date. And that's something that I have not seen addressed and that I don't think the council complied with. Thank you.
The, the City Council, this is the third public hearing on, on this package proposal. And so the, the city has provided abundant and ongoing notice to people as to the schedule and the substance of what's before the council. I, I hear a lot of people objecting to how the, the proposal has morphed over time. But that's the nature of legislative proposals. I think the City Council would be acting irresponsibly if it scheduled up a hearing on a legislative package and it did not change over time. I think it has changed in response to the abundant public testimony and participation that is still going on in this matter. And that is the nature of legislative packages as they move through the sausage-making machine. It's, it's not pretty, but it has to change in response to what the council hears, what the planning commission hears, and I, I believe that it has.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up from the public regarding any procedural questions, so. So I think that this would be a time that we would close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Do we have any? I've got one more. Two more people that have procedural questions. And let's see, if you don't raise your hand now, we will not be taking any more questions on procedural process. So Marty Dane.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is my first time doing this, so I appreciate just a second. Earlier in the testimony, I believe there was a question for Mr. Nielsen in regards to whether the changes had anything to do with R1 zoning. And Mayor, you said you would get Mr. Nielsen to respond to that. And I never heard his, his response. So is this a time where that might be possible?
No, we would do that in our, when we do our deliberations.
Okey-dokey, thanks.
Susan Frolic? Frolic?
Hi, everybody. I'm, I'm sorry I came in late. I didn't know if I would even be able to attend tonight. So I'm not sure if you've accepted public comment already.
We have and we are done with public comment. We're, this is only for procedural questions.
Okay. So I, I would just ask that I did submit something in writing and I really hope you all read it because I know that sometimes that doesn't necessarily happen. And I guess I just stay quiet now and listen for deliberations?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you won't take any more comments?
No, no. We, we did get a lot of public testimony that came in today. And in fact, it was being sent to us at, after five o'clock this evening. So there was a lot of public testimony that came in over the weekend and especially today. And the counselors all tried to read as much as we possibly could of all the testimony that came in, even though it was late today.
Okay, I guess I just would like to just end my last thing to say, just proceed with caution. So thank you so much.
All right. So we will, that, that's all we're going to have for procedural issues. No one else raise their hand. And do I have a motion to? And do I have a motion to close the public hearing and begin deliberations on the proposed legislation?
I move to close the public hearing and move on with deliberations.
I have a motion to close the public testimony and move on with deliberations. Okay. So Tim has made that motion, and Megan has seconded that. I'll do a roll call vote on that. Gladys?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Tim?
Hi.
Eric?
Nay.
Megan?
Yes.
And chair votes, yes. All right, so the next thing will be deliberations. And I'm sure that we will probably have additional questions of staff during our deliberations. And I know it's already late, and it's 8:45, but we need to take a five-minute break. We've been here since six o'clock, so we'll take a five-minute break, be back sharp in five minutes, and we'll get started. Thanks. So it's only a duplex, not a triplex or a fourplex?
Correct. In the code, and I believe it's under subsection A, it mentions the maximum two units attached per bill, or two units per building.
Okay, so if we had a 7,000-square-foot lot, how many units in the R1 could be built on that?
As proposed?
As proposed.
Two dwelling units.
Two dwelling units.
One dwelling unit per every 2,500 square feet. So in a 7,500, it would allow three dwelling units, 10,000 four-dwelling units.
Okay. All right, so I think that answers that R1 question of what could happen there. And Dustin, you explained at the very first of your, I'm just trying to clarify this first. Some of the people that were still testifying, I think it wasn't clear still what can happen and what can't happen on some of these lots density-wise. So if you could just maybe reiterate that again, like you did at the very beginning this evening.
So for the purposes of the middle code, there's an area per dwelling unit that's set in each of the zones. For R2 and R3, at the upper reaches, we have a one unit per every 1,500 square feet area or density rate. On a single family or a typical lot, that would allow three dwelling units on a 5,000-square-foot lot, which is our typical minimum lot size. We do provide the bonus for units under 800 square feet, which would allow four dwelling units. At the upper reaches and the maximum dwelling, you would need upwards of 15,000 square feet to start realizing some of the maximum dwellings. So in R2, you would need a 15,000-square-foot lot in order to develop eight dwelling units, which is the maximum project size as set by this code. And then in R2, or excuse me, R3, the same requirement. We would just allow a little larger project, but no more than 12 units for that project. And I could bring back up the graphic if you want, if you think that'll help.
The rest of council, would you like to see that graphic again? Gladys, did you want to see it again? Are you okay?
I'm okay, but for the purposes of the callers, I'm happy to share the graphic again, just to give folks reassurance.
Okay. Yeah, maybe if you could just bring that back up, because when I was hearing comments, they didn't seem to jive with what you had said.
Yep.
So I think it's just for clarity for people that are giving testimony.
Okay, let me cue our graphics up quickly. We decommissioned the PowerPoint before, once I finished, so.
Sorry. I guess one of the visuals that I was trying to get into my head while you're bringing that up was that at the current code, you can have any size main dwelling in an R1. You could have a 4,000-square-foot house or a 10,000-square-foot house and an 800-square-foot ADU. So you can have two dwellings, one can be any size, the second one has to be 800 square feet. If you were doing missing middle, you couldn't have that 8,000 or 10,000-square-foot home, correct?
Correct. Both dwellings would need to be under the 1,200-square-foot or 1,500, if you have a garage, square foot. The ADU configuration would have no restriction on the size of the main house, but the ADU itself would be limited to the 800 square feet, and they would have to be related. This code would allow the land division and subsequent division of the units, whereas the ADU must remain accessory. One other point of clarification in your code, in the last section, there is an allowance for a single-family home conversion that will allow up to four dwelling units. So this wouldn't be a, this wouldn't be a new development, but the conversion of a single-family home within an R1 can allow up to four dwelling units. And that's a special provision that's written into the code as well, under existing single-family homes.
Okay, I think there, I think I know of at least one between, already in, I think it's in the historic district downtown off of State Street that is an older historic home that's got four, at least four units in it.
Which is, would be typical.
Would be typical, okay, of what we're talking about, okay.
So this is, this is from a standard R1, or excuse me, R2 lot of 5,000 square feet. And this is the look, the two on the right, the far right would be the maximum number of dwelling units that could be built on our test bits based on this lot size. The three units at 1,200 to 1,500 square feet with the garage included, and then up to four with, that would be no more than 800 square feet.
Okay, great. I think hopefully that'll clarify for some of the people that gave testimony of what we're talking about and what we're not talking about. You know, the planning commission has been going over this a lot. And, you know, they deal with this all the time, and we've been getting up to speed on it. And I know that, you know, sometimes when you read down through these columns, it's what the heck does that actually really mean? And so I think it's helpful to have these diagrams so people can see what we're talking about. All right, is any, any other questions for Dustin before we kind of get started on discussion of some of these items? Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did have a couple of questions for Justin, and you asked me earlier to hold them, so here I am. First, I did notice Dustin that the, there was a provision in the ordinance that was in last week's version, but not this week's version, that related to short-term rentals. And there was a bar in the version before. And it seems like we've eliminated the bar, the short-term rentals in the current version. I wish, wondered if you could speak to that.
That's correct. And I tried to flag this in your cover memo so that it didn't slip by. Based on what I was getting from council feedback, the short-term rental regulation, the prohibition on top of existing regulations was omitted from this as a zoning draft. That would not, and we cannot preempt the licensure requirement. So these units in the R1, R2, and R3 zones would still have the parking requirement. They would still must, they would still have the residency requirement for new short-term rentals. But in the C1 zone, as written, you would be able to, you would still have to follow the parking requirement, but it wouldn't have a residency requirement. This simply, as written, would yield the short-term rental regulations or reserve that exclusively to your existing licensing requirement. It wouldn't add another layer of prohibition onto it.
Thank you. A couple of other quick questions. I haven't been dealing directly with a lot of the developers who I understand have been involved with this. I just wondered if you had a sense, do we believe that we have developers who are ready to sort of jump on this code and pursue development options? Is that, do we have that sense that that will happen, that this will be pursued by developers?
I think at your last meeting, we had at least one developer affirm that they would, they would go forward with it. And I believe that's, that was Mike Kettler of IBC, who has a couple subdivisions, who I believe, if you check the record, represented, he would, he would put his, he would put forth this development under his ability. That's really the one affirmative that I have regarding developers' willingness to do this.
Okay, thank you. And my last question, I saw in the submissions that came across the ballot that there was a port commissioner who raised a question about whether there would be kind of sufficient volume throughput on our water rights to support potential new, I guess, water users. And I guess I just wondered, not from, it didn't sound like it was a water rights issue, but that there have been discussions with the former Public Works Director that there just might be a throughput issue based on some valve. And I didn't know anything about that. I just wondered if there's, if that's valid, if that's a valid concern or not, if you have any information about that.
I don't believe the valve issue, we've heard anything regarding a limitation in ability to serve domestic users based on a valve or upstream restriction.
Okay.
Rachel, do you want to make a comment on that?
No, Mayor, the Public Works Director is on the line, but Dustin's correct. There are no valve issues, to my knowledge.
Okay, is that it, Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great, all right. Other question, Jessica?
Um, Dustin, can you remind me what parking allow, would be allowed now in the, like in the side setbacks?
Yeah, currently, there is parking allowed in the side setbacks.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'll just ask another question on that line. So the side setbacks, the rear setbacks, and the front setbacks, I believe you can park in all of those setbacks now, is that correct?
Only one car in the front.
Okay, but the back unlimited, sides unlimited, and the front one car. Okay, but the back unlimited, sides unlimited, and the front one car.
That's, that's correct.
One car between the house and the street.
Yeah, the the code, yeah, their code refers to a one, one car in the front setback. Essentially, it contemplates a garage and one vehicle tandem parked in the front of the garage, so essentially within the front yard.
Okay, uh Megan?
I want to follow up with that. So that's, I mean, one car in the setback is different than only one car between the dwelling and the street. Because if your house was pretty far back on the lot, you could presumably have more than one houses lot or more than one car, as long as it's not in the ten foot setback, right?
That's correct. If your house setback to the, if you had a deep lot, three hundred feet deep, um we would only really set the requirement for the first twenty and then allow.
Well, ten, ten didn't have a garage, right?
Excuse me?
If you don't have a garage, it's just ten feet setback.
If you don't have a garage, it's it's ten feet. If we would require to stay out of the ten foot, or we would allow one up into that ten foot front yard area.
Okay. Um and while I'm muted, I have one other question of, can you clarify? Um because there's, there's been multiple concerns about the neighbors don't have any input on this, which I believe is part of the point of getting, getting rid of the basically conditional use permit. What is allowed currently without neighbor input in our, I think especially like R one, R R two, R three zones?
Oh, on a subdivided lot, uh your single family home duplex, um essentially some subject to conversion townhouse would would be permitted uses. The townhouse, the only public input that occurs is after the build and at the time of land division. So uh after the units built, uh typically, we have a uh review for the land division, the partitioning, but the units are typically there at that point. So those would be the type of townhouse duplex, single family homes that would be permitted without uh permitted uses by right, not subject to discretionary standards or review.
Um other questions for Dustin? Uh Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. Um so Dustin, can you explain the uh the issue with uh the alley access? And how that came about, a brief description about how that, what the rationale for that is, was in the planning.
So uh as recommended by Planning Commission, the alley access uh didn't get uh that was a recommendation that went through um the draft within Planning Commission. It was only raised by uh individual commissioner afterwards. So Planning Commission had the recommendation to require the alley load. I think for our test purposes, most of our test fits, we didn't use the alley configuration, because uh although it becomes preferential and limiting curb cuts, we just, the the amount of our building stock and housing stock that has alley access is limited. Um but where it is available, it is something that we uh and the code definitely requires and encourages to utilize alleys where available.
So in your opinion, does that, would that preclude the development of some areas?
I don't think it would necessarily preclude the development in some areas. There's that the access, I think there's a lot of deference given to the code in terms of parking within that, the rear area and the access. I think there are some concerns about the status of the alleys and their condition. And that using them becomes triggered to to public improvements when they used.
So let me ask you in a slightly different way, Senator Mark. Uh the uh are there a lot of areas that that would apply to right now? I mean, just in a in a relative sense?
Different uh alley development or alley access?
Alley access, both, actually.
Well, I think we have a limited amount that's accessed by alleys, and I think the alleys that we typically have have limited amount of public improvements. Uh so I a good, a good amount of the alleys uh would require upgrades to them.
So on, um I wanted to ask on that same line, Tim, since you're on that. Um so if if you had a um a lot, kind of mid-block, it had unimproved alley all the way from one side to the other on that block. Um if you required alley access, the whole thing, or at least from one end of the block to halfway down, would be required to be improved. Is that true?
Uh I don't think the whole thing would be improved. We would require some improvements, but I don't think it necessarily triggers the whole off-site block. For, I think we would be looking at a, some sort of nexus and proportionality. The amount of impact that it does, that it, that it impacts the alley and the number of dwelling units. Uh so it wouldn't necessarily trigger a half or a half-block alley improvement. I I would definitely not uh think that is represented.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, jumping on the alley thing, Dustin, when we talked the other day, um even if you have an alley, there's, you can have one curb cut on the street side and um I I I took away from that, that you could actually have the driveway go through to like a parking area that's also fed by the alley. Is that, is that a true truism, that you can have a street curb cut in the alley entrance?
Uh that was discussed and we, and it wasn't settled on by council that you would allow, not only just uh, you would require the first access to be by alley, but still allow the single curb cut. That, that has not been um the one curb cut in addition to the alley, that that hasn't been finalized by council.
So that is that, that's not in the code then? Where, i- if it existed, where would it be?
Uh under access, uh the statement and the amendment would look something like uh where it abuts an alley, access would be required. But a user may still be allowed a secondary point of access to the street. So that would be in uh in access.
Gotcha.
And I do believe that you had asked, told me, Dustin, if there was an existing curb cut on the roadside already um that, and there was an alley, that you wouldn't be forced to close the front access.
Right, as far as the retrofit, if if you, if you had an existing access point, it wouldn't be an automatic closure for an existing dwelling.
Okay. Something else, Mark?
No, no, I I I sort of liked the added flexibility, even though I'm I'm a fan of alley access. Uh I like the added flexibility when we were talking, so uh maybe Kate, if we're keeping a list of things to discuss that, that would be a great one.
Okay.
That would be under uh section F, which includes access, circulation, driveways, and approaches. Uh C is the uh the individual provision.
Okay. Um other questions for Dustin right now? Uh Tim?
So Dustin, there's been several comments about uh stormwater, and I'm kind of wondering if you can kind of reiterate um how stormwater is dealt with and kind of some of these increased lot coverages.
Uh so in section G, uh we talk about just recommendations for LID. Uh this, like any other development, um you know, has has stormwater implications. Part of the, the idea of using and developing this in the city would be where stormwater utilities are available. I think one of the uh, a bit of a misconception here is that just because you have existing development with lot coverages, doesn't mean that you, you necessarily end up with uh less impervious surface. What it does do is that your current code restricts the amount of driveway, parking spaces, and roof coverage. It doesn't necessarily uh trigger or mandate more impervious surface, unless you assume that all users actually uh landscape their, the rest of their site. So for example, you could see a thousand square feet of patio, as long as it's not necessarily considered a driveway or considered a parking space to be installed with no regulation or oversight. Uh we also see a lot of gravel go in, uh compacted gravel uh in areas where we have limited amount of landscaping. None of that, although impervious in some nature, does not necessarily consider stormwater features, nor is it covered by lot coverage restrictions. So um that is one thing that we look to address when requiring a landscape mandate, especially at the perimeter. An opportunity to require living materials and plantings that could positively impact stormwater, although you may see additional building on the site. So those areas that are left, especially at the perimeter, where things leave the site, um side setbacks that must be maintained, that can't be parked in, that is to stop some sheet flow and allow some balancing of sites um against neighboring properties rather than pavement to occur from, from end to end. Sorry, that that's kind of a, a little bit of a from where it appears throughout the code.
Can I ask another question, Mayor, as long as I'm in community?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, the issue with the parking, parking in front. Uh I think I asked this question, but I want to ask it last time, and I want to ask it again. Do you think that uh by having stipulating that that can occur, that there will be some lots that won't be able to be developed?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good assumption, that uh the requirement of allowing or prohibiting parking in the front um will make some lots more difficult to to develop. There will be lots that will be you know, that that is a, a standard that may rule out lots based on topography, based on certain amount of frontage uh that could rule them out, or become uh infeasible by way of grading. That that's a real possibility.
Thanks, Justin.
Megan?
Kind of, we have another question. Um the landscape area in the code is is written as like planted landscaping, and I wanted to clarify, I know early, early in our conversations, but there were a lot of concerns that the landscape area wouldn't include or does, or does maybe include um I'm hoping it includes like natural vegetation, that you don't have to cut down and then plant something else, or it includes wetlands or or other natural features. And I'm wondering if, if you heard from council that that is what we wanted in the code, and if that's what you mean with the current code, or if that needs to be clarified, assuming four more of us would like that.
Uh yeah, initially in the code as drafted, um there was a prohibition against um uh or not a prohibition, that open, there was an open space requirement that would be that would be mandated, and that wetlands or steep slopes would not be counted towards that. Uh that was eliminated from the code, and we simply have an open space buffer. Um the, I think the, or the landscape buffer, I think the idea that natural areas would be included is 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 contemplated in that code, that they don't necessarily have to be sculpted in, I guess, la- a a a feature of landscape architecture, that natural areas would be included in your in one's uh required amount of landscape area, even if it was maintained in its natural state.
Uh this might be pedantic then, but does, wo- would everyone interpret planted landscape area to mean natural? Or or does the word planted imply some active work?
Is who is the planter? I guess that would, we we could, we could clarify that if that's a issue of of council, whether it's the, by by what means was it planted, by uh by um what force? But we we could, we could make sure we uh, we clarified that a natural area could be included in in language, if that was the council felt that was necessary. It's, I think it's pretty, pretty minor by way of policy, but I think it's, it's good to clarify that.
Okay, um Kate, that's something I'd like to clarify, assuming three other folks agree.
Yeah, I I think it's better if it's clearer. It's always better if it's clearer to me. If there's any question in a person's mind at this point, there'll probably be more questions in people's minds later. And I remember it being in, and then it was, then, you know, we took it out because we're going to include it, but I think it'd need to be probably clarified a bit.
Wh- where would that go if it, when, if if in the table in C?
I have page ninety-four of our packet is where I found like.
What page?
Route ninety-four on my notes, if that's right. Uh yes, in the definitions, landscape area means the planted impermeable surface area uh shall be planted to comply with regulations listed in our section H.
Well, maybe it should say something like it should be um currently planted or planted in the future, or something like that.
And some, something that says natural vegetation meets the requirement. And yeah, I mean, I, we don't need to write the code right now, but I would like that to.
We, we, we could make that, if there is four of you who agree that the natural should stay in, we could easily make that uh, make that change to clarify. But I believe.
Tim is thinks that should be clarified. I do, Megan?
I would support that as well.
Okay, Gladys does, Jessica? We've got at least four.
It's making sure that it's, that it, that's encouraged, not saying that it only can be natural.
Correct.
I haven't met very many unnatural plants, but I think that.
Himalayan blackberry, come on.
I have plenty, you can come and get whatever you want, yeah.
All right, so we we agree that that should be clarified. Right? Other questions? And then I'm going to kind of start down a list of things we haven't for for sure made any decisions about. Okay, um.
Tim had his hand raised.
What's that?
Tim had his hand raised, and he's not good at speaking up for himself.
Sorry, go ahead, Tim, go ahead, Tim.
Thanks, Mayor, thanks, Megan. So Dustin, I mean, just, just kind of as a, as a point of clarification. You know, there was a lot of discussion in the planning commission about the uh number of parking spaces required. So in general, what, you know, what was the kind of the motivation for reducing it from two to point seven five? You know, what what was really kind of the the impetus behind that?
So some of the driving factors on that were uh trying to take a, take a look at this building type as an individual use, rather than just relying on the existing code. Uh also, the idea that this was going to provide some options away from the two, two units. Uh and also the idea that parking uh as infill and on sites um and incorporated in the buildings is is a cost matter, that 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 will invariably uh drive up the cost of this development and reduce the bill, the amount of area that is allowed and dedicated to uh to units, uh that by using those, that area for parking, we would not be using it for infill or for building the dwellings themselves. That was some of the, that the high level rationale um as the consideration began of to look at the two units per dwelling. And and some of the idea, I think some of the comments were, uh if we continue to require the same thing, we should expect the same outcomes. And so taking a real look at one of the most driving factors of site design, be it parking, uh was, was definitely in the equation there for planning commission.
So did the planning commission discuss the uh potential effects on that street parking?
Yeah, I think uh even before we got to final recommendation, both in council and planning commission, uh we talked about some of the, the potential, the potential impacts, that if, without a a behavior change of of consumers or purchasers, there, there should be an anticipated demand increase on on-street parking. In that um, you know, as, as the opportunity presents, you may have people in, most likely this will be a, this will be a requirement, and I I don't think that was something that we necessarily wanted to give the impression that we overlooked. Um there was also very much, to some extent, a sentiment that we need to provide the greatest opportunity and really un-unbundle some of this parking and uh with some of these needed dwellings. And in, by requiring the amount, uh we were only going to, to limit the ability, further limit the ability for them to be built. So uh but I think when it came down to it, there was. So, uh, but I think when it came down to it, there was, I think I, I believe there was, there was no loss of the acknowledgement that this, this could have impact on on-street parking and the demands of on-street parking. I think that was, that was pretty well acknowledged.
But still, the decision was made to, to reduce it, to make a recommendation to reduce it, given the trade-offs associated with those two things.
Yeah, I think that's a fair, fair assessment. In li, in light of that, that demand, that recommendation was still made to you.
And just, uh, just one more, I guess, one more question. So how many meetings have we had on this, this topic between the planning commission and, and the city, and the city of, city council?
This would, I believe this is meeting number 13 between various workshops, public hearings and public meetings.
And that occurred over a couple of years?
No, that's been 13 meetings since December.
Since December.
So before that, we, before we initiated the legislative aspect, there was, uh, we had discussion in council meeting. And your commission had discussed, but really when it came down to the formulation of, of this code and this legislative amendment, uh, those have been the 13 meetings we've had. So anything that happened prior to December, you could add to that number.
Thanks, Justin.
Uh, Megan?
One last clarifying question. The, you know, max unit can be 1,200 unless you have a garage and it can be up to 15. Is that true for all of the different unit types or just particular ones?
That's all the unit types.
Okay. So three different places in the code, it's a little confusing about the 1,200 versus 1,500. So maybe some cleanup would be good. I can give you some page numbers.
Where it doesn't state that in every single column, is that what you're talking about, Megan?
So there's, there's definitely that chart where it doesn't explain that. And that's like the definition of cottages just says up to 1,200 and doesn't clarify the 1,500. And then yeah, page 102. It's mentioned somewhere, but I don't really put that. Oh, it's explained very well on 102, but it's not explained in the chart on 90 or in the definition of cottages on 94. So maybe consistency.
We could make cross-reference to that definition as well.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, uh, other clarifying questions? All right. As we've talked about this in the last numerous iterations that we've, we've been presented and given our opinion about what we thought. And it went back to planning commission. We've, I think that we in general, not 100% of us, but probably in general, we've been getting closer to what, what we wanted in this and have been in general, the bulk of us in favor of it. But I guess I'd like to go around and barring some of these issues that we haven't quite honed in and 100% on, although we may be 90% there already, such as, I'm going to list these off, alley access being only from an alley, distance between the interior of the units. There's been quite a bit of discussion about that recently. The number of cars per unit, parking in front of the units, the height. I think those are some of the things that we have discussed in the last few meetings. Um, and we've kind of gone back and forth a little bit and, and been honing down on it. But I guess I just want to, in general, are we good with other things except for these, these items? We want the ordinance, we want to do this, we're ready, we're ready to, to go on it. And we need to figure out what, what these are going to be and get it, get it clarified and, and give this a shot. So I, I just, I wanted to see if, just have some hands or some head nods on a majority of people that feel that way. And then we, let's get into the nitty gritty. Okay, I've got one hand, two, three. Okay, I've got, okay, I want to just state for the public that can't see this, some of this, that Jessica had her hand up. Gladys had her hand up, Tim had his hand up. Mark, did you have your hand up? Mark did, okay. Megan, no? Megan had her hand up. Eric?
Mayor, I did not have my hand up and I was hoping at some point to be able to talk about my proposed amendment.
Okay, all right. So we've got, we've got these items that we need to go through and Eric has a potential amendment. And I'm, I'm not sure if it has to do with any, I don't think it has anything to do with any of these items that I just listed. Is that correct, Eric?
That's correct, Mayor.
And does it have anything to do with specifically anything that is in the ordinance already?
No, I, no, it's just a process overlay.
Okay, all right, all right. Megan?
I might have one other thing besides the stuff you mentioned that is part of our current code I'd like to talk about.
Okay, why don't you go ahead? What, what would that be? I'll add this. I want to get everything on this list. I'm going to, I'm going to put Eric's amendment on here also besides these, these, so we can discuss all this.
Okay, so two, I guess it's maybe two things related to our one of, the max units per development currently just says six cottages. And I'd like to clarify, given cottages are now the same size as other units, if that is just for cottages or if it would apply to other housing unit types under this middle housing code. And then I would still like to see that we are incentivizing smaller units under 800 square feet in the R1 as well, like we are doing in the R2, R3 and C1.
So you're saying incentivizing smaller, the smallest units or smaller units?
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be a different square footage, obviously, but like we do in the other, other zones. You know, there's, there's one square footage minimum for the size 800 to 1,500. And then there's a slightly smaller, more incentivized size for the under 800. And, and part of this is, you know, I know we want affordability and diversity and we definitely want smaller units for a number of folks in our community that are smaller housing, you know, family types. And so I'd like to see us at least discuss that because it's weird to exclude from one of our biggest zones.
Okay. All right. Um, so, Mark?
Um, one thing that got just barely touched on by Eric is STR is in the C1 column and whether we want to talk about that again or not, so.
Okay. Okay, STR is in the C1. So I just want to be, people wary that this is, is 930. We have probably about 10 items that we would like to try to get some clarity on. And I'd love to get through 10 items in a half an hour, but I don't think we will. And I want to see if you guys would agree to continue this. We would start in and go till 10 o'clock, but I am not, I, I don't feel personally as a great thinker after 10 o'clock at night. And I think these weren't a lot of good thinking and, and discussion between ourselves. And I would love to be able to do all this tonight, but I, I don't think I can make good, really great decisions after, after that late. So I just want to get your thoughts on, on that because we have quite a bit still here to go. And, and we can try and go and if we, if we come to agreement on a lot of this very quickly, then that's different. But I just want to say that and at 10 o'clock we'll reassess and see where, what everybody thinks. All right. So Eric, why don't you talk about your proposal? At least get it on the table so we know what it is and then whether we'll discuss it right first or, but if you want to tell us what you're thinking.
Fair enough, Mayor. And I circulated this after getting, most of the public comment was received after one through this afternoon. But the, the idea, I guess, is to create a reporting mechanism to council so that if, if we find ourselves in a situation where there are unintended consequences from this measure, whether it's not actually fulfilling the, the, the hope or the promise of striking some affordability, but rather results in the possibility of maybe a ramp up for, from out of town folks buying second homes, et cetera, to have some kind of, of structure in place within this code to facilitate an annual review. So, and, so what I did is I, I put this together this afternoon, I circulated it by email. And if anyone listening would like a copy of it, just send me an email to my city council address and I'll send you this proposed language. But what it was basically going to suggest is that the planning commissioner, once a year in January, after conferring with the city manager, the fire chief, the public works director and the chief of police, provide an annual report about whether we are really, whether this, what, what has been the product of this code? In other words, is this code going to achieve its stated purposes? Because the code does have, one of the, in one of the sections, it describes the stated purposes of the, of the code. And so the idea is to have an annual report from the planning director to just report on whether it's achieving its stated purposes. And the types of metrics that requests are, you know, after conferring with the people, those department heads I mentioned, are we seeing infrastructure problems or are we not? Are we, how many units are being put into production as a result of this code? What is the stated consideration for each purchase, which you can, under Oregon law, get from the face of the deed, to have a statement of what these units are going for, where they're located, how many there are, and kind of a qualitative statement about whether the code is meeting its stated objective so that we have a process built into the code to just bring it, bring it to a public, bring to a public forum, a public discussion about whether the goals are actually being achieved. And we've heard a number of folks concerned that this might not achieve its stated purpose. So I'm trying to kind of bridge what I'm seeing as a gap in public support for this between the folks who are in favor of it and some people that are concerned about unintended consequences. So can we have an annual review process that basically provides a forum for public input, which by the way, I think is one of the stated purposes of statewide goal planning? Number two is to have a forum for public input on land use issues. So it sort of checks that box as well. But anyway, I set it out in code language because I know we are, we're at the end game for this, not at the beginning stage of this. And so the proposal sort of speaks for itself. But that was kind of the gist of what I was trying to suggest as a way to maybe bridge some of the, the gap I'm hearing in the community.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I think probably the best process for letting the public see what that suggestion was is that, you know, every, every, all the, all the public testimony that comes in and all the written stuff that we have is publicized. And so I think it's probably best to go through Dustin because Dustin has a copy of that, correct Dustin? Okay, Dustin has a copy and that they should, they should be getting it from staff versus you personally, Eric. I think that's probably the best process to, you know, for, so everybody can see it. Then to go back and forth with, with people.
Fair enough, whatever your preference there is.
Yeah, I think that'd probably be the best process for that. Okay, so basically what you're, you're asking about a report in process on whether it's working or not working, kind of a deal. Okay, all right, great. All right, um, let's, let's start with something here and I'm just going to pick something to start with and let's start with height. We were still discussing that last time. We have had comments six to zero from the planning commission saying we need to tackle it citywide, not just for this. I want to go with that first and let's see where people are on that. I, I.
We lost your audio, Kate. No, we lost.
You hear me now? Okay. I don't know. Sorry. Says my internet connection is unstable. Oh, okay. Hope this doesn't go out. I wanted to tackle height. I was just, I was just saying that planning commission had voted to, they didn't want to put it in, they wanted to leave it as it is and then tackle it citywide because it's an issue. And I, I would still prefer to do it that way. And I just want to talk about that one more time and see what people think about that. Others? Mark?
And I, I think I, I definitely support the draft plan that includes the height in this code. I think that as we see the first units going into neighbor, you know, these first developments going in, having this code instead of the less defined and more, more heighty options that are in the current code would, would provide some unnecessary and unwelcome reactions from the public. So, so I, I'm supportive of the, the, the code as presented.
Okay, Tim, did you have your hand up?
I did, and not to be a contrarian, but I would, I would agree with you, Mayor, and I probably would defer to the planning commission on this. I mean, I kind of understand it. I'm not sure that it's fully vetted quite yet. At least, you know, given what the planning commission vote was, it doesn't seem like it, like it had their support. So I think I would prefer to, like revisit it at another time.
Okay. Megan and then Jessica.
I'm going to go with you and Tim. I, I think planning, I'm, I'm taking planning commission's recommendation pretty seriously. I, I do agree that there are some citywide issues with our height methodology and I'm happy to put that on the 2022 work plan. It seems important, but I don't want to create a different system for this that hasn't really been vetted. I think that creates disincentives to using this code and actually just flips people over to doing tall townhomes under the existing methodology. I'd like to treat these equally and, and address height as a larger city issue.
Jessica?
I agree with Mark for all the reasons that he said. I feel like this is the time to fix it in this one and use it as a example.
Eric?
I want to make sure I'm tracking. The question is whether we maintain the lower height impositions under the code as a, correct? That's the question, under the proposed code.
Right, the question is whether we go with the recommendation of keeping the, the code as it's written in the new missing metal or we stay with the way we have it now and tackle it citywide.
Yeah, I think I'm aligned on that particular issue with Jessica and Mark. I think, um, I just make sure I'm understanding the issue correctly, but having these units be smaller potentially, I think, makes public policy sense. If the goal is to try to drive these into an affordability market, if we align them with the rest of the height for regular homes, it, it's feels like it's going to be more like the big townhomes that we're trying to get away from. So if I'm understanding the issue correctly, I think I'm agreeing with Mark and Jessica.
Okay. I think, I think Megan was trying to make the point that potentially if this code is kept the way it is, that we might get more townhomes because people will just decide not to do missing metal because they can't do it taller. Is that, was that right, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I mean, we're just guessing what people are going to do in the future, but that was the point you were making. Gladys?
I agree with Councilor Zan Miller, Meta and Councilor Haney.
Okay. And I agree with Tim and Megan. So we have four people that want to keep the code as it's written in the missing metal. So let's say that we've, we were split on that one, but it's a four, three vote and we're going to go forward with the way it's written in the missing metal. All right. Cars per unit. The recommendation has been somewhere between that we've kind of all coalesced around a little bit is point seven five or one unit. We've heard a lot of testimony about parking. Sounds like there was some split in different numbers that came up at planning commission. So. Unless someone wants to throw out a completely different number, I know Eric, you had said one plus, but we talked about this previously. I know there was at least one person on planning commission that said zero. So we've kind of got a big, big range here, but I think we kind of came down to between one and point seven or five. And so let's go with what we're thinking on that right now. Gladys.
One.
Mark.
One.
Megan.
I'm happy to go with the planning commission recommendation of point seven five. Again, I really want these units to actually be built and be used and I'm happy to create incentives that allow that. And and flexibility where the developer can build more if they want, but they are not required to if there is sufficient non-street parking.
Okay, Jessica.
One.
Eric.
Well, given this, the binary choice I'm hearing between point seven five and one, I will, I will say one without a deep dive, I'll just say very briefly, I probably would. Want to entertain the possibility of more of a graduated application of this entire code. Because, you know, west of Rand is different than Hazel is different than Columbia Street with one side parking on the street, etc., but. If your honor would like my opinion as to the distinction between point seven five and one, I would say one.
Okay. I I just want to make it clear that you probably would say more than one if you had that choice. Make the record, make the record clear. Okay.
I would, I would actually be fine with point seven five west of Rand, but. It just depends where we're talking about if we do a graduated analysis, which we're not, I don't think, doing. But in general terms, I would say one or more than one.
Okay, Tim.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess to bookend Eric there, if I had a choice, I would say none. But would default point seven five.
Okay.
In my rationale, just briefly for for choosing the none is is that. I think that that really, and I want to clarify that what we're talking about here is we're actually requiring. The number of parking spots that are going to be built.
For you, for you.
Yeah, so that doesn't necessarily include builders from building more parking spots if they wanted to.
Correct, correct.
So I think that that by, you know. Minimizing the requirement, you would end up with with a mix of different situations. Whereas if you stipulated too high, you're just going to end up with more parking. That may not necessarily be needed.
Okay, so you're you're. You're for less, basically.
Point seven five.
But technically, wasn't it that the recommendation that planning commission made was point seven five, point seven five, but it still technically meant one?
It may, it means one, it means one until you get up to four units. Because you can't have point seven five of a, you know. Can't actually have point seven five, but when you get up to the fourth unit, then you're only going to have three parking spaces for four units, or if you get up to eight units, then you're going to have. Six parking spaces for eight units. If you say point seven five. But if you say one, then you have eight parking spaces for eight units. That's, that's, that's where it's just when you cross over to that fourth unit that it makes a difference.
Then I'm going to change my one to point seven five to agree with what planning commission has suggested. Based on that. Yeah, based on planning commission.
All right. And I am going to, I was waffling back and forth last time and I went point seven five, I'm going to go to one this time. I. I feel like I've heard more about parking than any other issue. And I'm trying to visualize some of the places that will have 12 units and how much curb space there will be. To get those extra cars off this, you know, where are you going to put them? And I'm going to go with one. So we are another split vote like we had last time, four to three, and it will be one unit, one car per unit. All right. Distance between the interior units. I believe there was a recommendation, we'd all. I think agreed to the distances on the setbacks. For the exterior, but there's some talk about potentially making. The distances inside smaller. The spaces between and Dustin, maybe you could just. Talk to us a little about, a little bit about that discussion that you had with some of the builders and others about. About that. Being, I think it was recommended to be 10 feet, but some people were saying, well, six was enough. Because you could put fire ratings in the eaves and then they, it was fine.
Yeah, so this comes from section I in your code. It's on page 103 in your packet, if you have packets ready. It has to do with building separation and. As we looked at interior smaller cottages, we really provided an emphasis to make sure that the. That the setbacks around that were measured from the site, but there was also a building separation between the internal units. And on. Within this code. The initial. Recommendation, the recommendation that's drafted is 10 feet. Part of the building community raised the issue that. You could, you could get a building separation of six feet between these units and still comply with the fire code without any extraordinary. Without any extraordinary construction types. And and they were worried that if we required more than the fire code, it would create a disincentive and we'd end up with detached units. Or excuse me, we'd end up with attached units rather than the detached cottages that. That they saw as as beneficial. So from the draft, it not only addresses some of the fire code issues, but. What we looked at is really with with some of the. Encroachments allowed within that area for eaves. What what was the space that we're ending up with? Although it could be built safely within fire code, do we end up with a space for the end user and the residents that is. Provides for maintenance? Does it have sufficient light and air? How does it look in the long run? How does it feel? Is it the, is it a sufficient amount of space between there? So that's really where where the decision came. The discussion was, should you reduce it to six foot? That is a safe distance by fire code standards. And allow that to be the minimum. I think that that's, that's my summary of the discussion.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dustin. So I think that there was, there was discussion, like Dustin said, that the, some of the builders were saying, well, you know. If you could let them be closer together, then we can make it into a cottage versus a duplex. Or cottage versus a triplex. And that might be a more desirable. Type unit for sale, or it might be a more desirable unit to look at from the neighbor's standpoint. And so there would be more flexibility to to do different things. Maybe the market will say, you know, I don't really, it it's not useful to have that. Let's just make it 10, let's just do it different, or let's just do a duplex. But I guess it just leaves more flexibility for the builders to to work with. For that. So I'm, I'm personally in favor of changing it from 10 to six. Let's have some more discussion about it, or if you guys are ready to just say what you think about it, go, just go ahead. I'm I'm trying to keep tabs here with. With all these different items and how people are. What they're saying on it. Megan.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you. I think setting setting our minimum as the minimum, you know, fire distance for safety makes sense because again, it's the minimum. The developer can and the market can figure out what they actually want to make, but I think. And I doubt you would ever get that it's like, oh, it's four cottages and they're all six feet on every single side, but it may make sense to have them six feet apart in one area. So you can fit a lot to the realities of that lot. I don't want to be so prescriptive that, again, we're not getting these built, so I'm happy to go lower than 10 feet to the the minimum fire safety distance.
Okay. Jessica.
I like keeping it at 10 for the usability that Dustin noted, the light and air. And also earlier tonight, he mentioned that Ben reviewed their code that has this and decided to keep it at 10 feet. So I, for those reasons, I would like to keep it at 10.
Okay. Anyone else ready to? Way in, Tim?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to agree with you and Megan, you know, make it six. For flexibility.
Okay. Mark, Gladys, Eric. Mark, I see you're muted.
So I was going to see, say 10 and then use the variance to get to six when it was needed, but but I'm I'm. I'm pretty waffly on this one and I'd be happy with six as well. In other words, I'm no use at all in this discussion.
Okay.
Dustin, Dustin, we, you and I talked about this on Friday. Can you, can you? Can you repeat what you told me about it? If it's at 10 right now, it still can go down to six. Can you repeat that portion of our conversation?
So. Six foot is is really the minimum when it comes to fire code standards. At that point, we start really, we start challenging some fire construction techniques. 10 foot is what was recommended, not only to, it it covers the fire code standard, but it it provides some utility. For future access. So anything in between there, we're not going to run into a pure life safety standard. The 10 foot is just really recommended when it comes to really what we thought about as future owners and their. Ability to do some maintenance. If you needed to use a ladder. You needed to store trash, your snow tires, these other features. It is just kind of a, it's more of a functional element. It's not, it's not the minimum fire code requirement.
And the houses that are built right on Belmont, what are those? Are those 10 feet or are those? The townhomes homes right on Belmont as you're like turning the corner?
Oh, that's Stella Lane, the Stella cottages. I don't, those are built under the PUD standards. They would, they will probably be more than 10 apart between them, but. I I wouldn't consider that apples to apples and infill.
Eric.
Yeah, Mayor, I wasn't sure if you wanted someone to go next, so.
Gladys is still thinking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay. I can tell she's still thinking. Go ahead, Eric, and then Gladys can go last.
Is it okay with you, Gladys? Okay, thank you. So I realize we're sort of picking up individual pieces of bark and looking at them when there's still the discussion to be had about the forest, but on this particular issue. I think my honest answer would be six feet in R3 and C1, but I don't think that's on the table, so I would. Suggest, I think I'm with the 10 foot setback people for a citywide rule.
Gladys.
I don't know, you guys. Honestly, I feel like I I I don't know. And I'm just being honest.
Okay, well, we have, we have. Four votes for six feet. So we have more than, we have a majority for six feet, so you don't have to say. Because we do have already four votes. My myself is six, Tim, Mark and Megan. So we have six for the interior distances. We're at 10 o'clock, you guys. We still have incentives. We have alley access. We have STRs. We have parking in front. We have Eric's proposal. We have a lot still to discuss, so. I think we should continue this discussion. But I want, I want other, I want other thoughts.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that. I. I don't want to do this for another hour, to be honest. I don't think it's going to be a productive conversation for us all. I know I've, yeah, I would support that.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, we've got, we've got a majority that agrees that we should continue the discussion. We had a lot of public testimony. It took a while, but that's, you know, how it is, so that's fine. All right. I'm trying to see when we might be able to continue this too. Let's see here. Dustin, do you have a suggestion when we can, when we will have time to actually continue this? Meeting?
Well, you have, I believe you've canceled the next meeting on the 22nd.
We we don't have one during spring break, correct?
And I believe we have meetings coming up on April 12th, which I think you have. You'll have a TSP item on for that. But certainly I could bring, I could bring something back that I had done.
Okay, I think we should do that. I don't think we should go any further out than that because that's almost a month away.
We've done this whole series of off Mondays anyway. Could we do the 29th? For just this one topic?
I'd like that too, and just having it be one, just this.
I'm not exactly sure that I can commit to the 29th at this point.
And I'd like to get a date certain for it just because it's better for, to adjourn to a date certain. I think we need to go to the 12th. Pardon?
What about the fifth?
I will, I will have a conflict on the fifth. I have a public hearing. I'm sorry. I have more than one public hearing.
I could do the 29th.
I could do the 29th as well.
So, Tim, are you, you're, you can't do the 29th, is that right?
I just looked at my calendar and I'll probably be able to do the 29th as well.
Okay. Is everyone okay with the 29th? I mean, is that okay with, is staff okay with the 29th?
Mayor, we'll make it work, absolutely.
Okay. All right.